Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Joshua Small and I know some of you have already heard some of this, probably a couple of the other boards I've been through, so before I begin, just how much time do I have? So I don't disrespect that.
Five, five, six minutes.
Okay. So I'm not really gonna get into a full demo and what I'm just gonna talk about is really a concept. A lot of people are probably familiar with seeing bike shares in other communities when you travel. You might have seen them in Denver, Colorado Springs. Most of the large cities around the country have these sorts of programs already. And these programs have a long history of, not really that long, but they have a history of adding a lot of vibrancy into the community. There's a lot of people who might be interested in terms of sustainability efforts. There are other people who are interested in transportation connectivity and the ways that they can get around town. They don't ride a car or a bus or any of those sorts of things. And there's a lot of other cities around Colorado that have also been implementing these as just another option for people to take advantage of. Once people get on bikes and actually start spending more time around downtown areas, they usually tend to burn more calories, everybody owns their cars, and they tend to stop more, shop more, spend more money in restaurants and that sort of thing. And so this is just one way of having Trinidad kind of keep up with some of the services that are being provided by some of the larger cities around the country and around the state. This particular setup is, there's a small fraction of them around the country that are independently owned and operated. This is one of those. This is not a franchise. We didn't partner up with another company to, you know, set up a location here in Trinidad. Giddyup is a complete Trinidad startup. It's a local business. I've been living here for five years and so anything that goes into this comes right back down into the community. The entire setup on how it works is, it all goes through an app on your phone. And so payment, tracking, everything, the way your account is set up on, it goes through the app on the phone. You can use that to check a bike out. Checking out a bike only takes about five seconds. Once you're actually set up in the account, you scan it with your phone, the bike will offer you. You're able to ride. When you're done, you can take it to any bike rack in downtown Trinidad, lock it back up, and the lockup process takes about five seconds as well. And so...
So when people are driving around town, can you tell where they're at?
The bikes are actually, yes, they're tracked by GPS. And your phone connects to the bike through a Bluetooth connection through the app. All of it goes in the background. You don't have to do anything. It's all automatic.
Josh, what, how is the app used once the bike is replaced to the rack? Is there a way for the app to infiltrate into a customer's phone?
It's already on the phone. So to answer your question, let me just back up for a bit. I didn't design the app. The people who built the bikes built the app. It's part of the service, it's part of the package. So as far as the software and the security and all of that sort of stuff goes, that is handled by another company. They have all sorts of certifications and standards that they meet like many other apps and services like that, software. But to answer your question, once it's on your phone, all of that information is, you're plugged in the same way you'd be plugged into Netflix or any other thing that you're, that you have an account set up with. So if, on my end, when I'm able to go through financial records the same way anybody else who has financial records would, I would be able to see credit card information and that sort of stuff. But normally, you know, there's no reason to look into any of that.
Was, you know, I guess because people were talking about getting up around town, was that purchased on a grant or how did that work?
No, I attained some personal financing. I partnered with some other people and financed it and operated.
How many stations do you have in Trinidad?
So we have fourteen bikes. The stations themselves are actually going to be basic bike racks. So that means that anybody in the community is also able to use those bike racks for their personal bikes. Before we started, I tried to pay attention to how often the bike racks were used. And I myself didn't really see them use all that much except for the one in front of the library. I guess Marty at the community center is in here. I don't see that one all that often to see how often that one gets used as well. But we're already working with the city. We're already in the process of getting more bike racks out. It's my understanding that they're already here. They're just trying to get them scheduled to get them out on the street. And those bike racks have a little bit more higher capacity, six, seven bikes. So that way, you know, it doesn't look like there's only two bikes and they're Giddyup's bikes sitting on a bike rack preventing somebody else from...
That was part of the confusion, I think.
We tried to address that early on and that's why we're trying to work with bike racks so that other people were not monopolizing a certain amount of space. Everybody else can still use it.
Is there any, any other hotels?
We could do something like that. So I know you have looking to up the hill. I-25, you can't put bikes on and Santa Fe Trail, rent, Santa Fe Trail doesn't really have, it's not really pre-able to bike right now. In the future, I'm looking at e-bikes as a way to get around that. It's also my understanding that there's the Boulevard Edition to try and work its way back in that direction. And I think that would be a really viable artery to get bikes back into that direction. For the other stuff along Main Street, bikes are able to go anywhere in town. If you want to ride them there, they will take you there, but they're not designed for off-road use or anything like that. They're really just cruisers. They're single speeds. So some of the skier hills like Annes or Ogle, people would have to probably walk up there unless you're very, very ancient.
So, so people register it with all their legal name and then you have all the legal information?
Yes, in the same way that, it's just like any basic account. I'm sure most people in here have Netflix. And so most people probably don't remember signing up for it because that's not the way it works. You just use it instantly. And so, yeah, once you plug in all your information, I would have your name, your phone number, email address, your billing information, billing address, a way to get in contact with the end customers if there is damage or anything that needs to go forward.
Is this software usable in other cities? I mean, is this software that you're using, the same software that other cities, is it universal?
It's not universal. As I said, there are a bunch of different companies operating under a bunch of different names and the way that their systems work. There's a small fraction of them, like I said, that are independently owned and operated, even those differ in the platforms that they use. So this might help. There is, it'll say there on the first instruction, Bloom Bikes. And so I said that the company makes the software and they make the bikes. And so Bloom Bikes is the name of the network that they create. And there are other operators in the country that use it. Before I started, I spoke with some, a couple of different places around the country just to see what the service would be like. And they seem to be happy with it. So, sorry, another point to that. It's all based on GPS. There's no one else around here. I don't believe anybody in our region of the state is using anything like this, even up through Colorado Springs. Colorado Springs just started their pipe bike program in June of last year. And there's a few private operators in there as well. Denver uses D-Cycle and they have a few other private operators up there, but I don't think I hear Denver using bikes. And so it wouldn't really be anything applicable around here.
Are you working with the city by chance like for bike lanes or just one of the Colorado bikes? Do you talk to the city at all to get like some signs up in the bike lanes set up?
So there are a number of groups that are working with the city right now on various bike-related projects. The Comprehensive Plan also states that City of Trinidad is supposed to be the best state in the bike infrastructure. And so there are plans that have been spoken. I don't really know the schedule of the bike lanes are. It's my thinking on this that if we provide convenient parking for people, whether they're using Giddyup bikes or personal bikes, that more people will be encouraged to use bikes around town, whether they live here, whether they're visitors who are driving a lot of bikes on the back of their truck. They might be motivated to take the bikes off, use them, stop around town at any one of the spots that we would use as residents and then go on. I think that will lead to more cyclists visibility on the streets. And when we get to that point, I think it will be a good argument to be made for putting in some of that first bike lanes. I also think that some of the bike lanes, roads need to be worked on and I think there are other plans. And so the bike lane is kind of the last thing to go on after everything else has been done on that road.
Are you currently doing like a family bike night or something with these bikes at all? I know they do in the bigger cities where they do like a Friday night, you know, it's like a midnight bike ride or a ten o'clock bike ride. You see them all the time, like in different cities where they have a bunch of, ton of bikers riding around town in like kind of a little bike race or something.
So everything about this is designed to try and be a big community initiative and a lot of trying my best to make it open to anybody who wants to have a part in it. This week, I've been watching the weather. I'm actually thinking of trying to do a free day in the park to get people onto the platform and get people just used to the idea that these are around. I mentioned Netflix because the thing I'm trying to get across to people is that most people don't remember doing the first fifteen minutes of it. It's about showing up and using it instantly when you want and that's the idea. I want to do community rides as we get into the summer a little bit. There are some safety concerns. It's at ten o'clock at night or something like that. These bikes do have lights on them. They activate automatically as they're going to start day or night. But there's still road issues and again, starting this soon, most people aren't really used to seeing them in bikes on the streets. So trying to ease people into how all that looks and that's even something with the design of the bikes. It's hopefully to make them stand out enough that people see them and don't hit them.
Since you've implemented the program, can you tell if there's a lot of tourist traffic or local traffic?
I was speaking with Wally here a second ago. When people sign up, I'm able to see their name. And it'll say that so-and-so registered and the basic information I get off of that is their first name, their last name, their email address, and their phone number. And then, yeah, it doesn't say where they're from or anything like that. Beyond that, I can see where the bike was picked up and where it was dropped off. And I can see frequently picked up areas. In front of yours is one of the ones that gets hit a lot. And so there are names on the list that I don't recognize. I can say that much. Some of them could be residents, but they're not my friends. They're not friends of friends. They're not people I personally ask to say, "Hey, sign up for this and try this." And so that gives me a little like excitement right now, especially this early on.
Josh, how long have you had this actively in the community now and how successful have you been?
So I started working on the initial thinking, structure on this stuff in July of last year. By October, I can't remember exactly what date, I was approved by city council. And the bikes arrived probably sometime in November. And I think the first time they ever got put out on the street, we took a few of them out to the parade lights in September. And as of this morning, I think my Giddyup Facebook page is up to about two hundred and fifty followers. So this is our first season.
How many, how many actual rentals have you had?
Actually, so most of the rentals are me kind of doing maintenance and riding around and stuff like that. It's kind of hard to sift through everything that way. We have fifty-five registered users and we've had ninety-two rides as of this morning.
Josh, I guess Josh, I know enough that you're at the podium, Wally, but we are seeing so much information come out nationally and especially locally because it's so new, but what is causing the bike phenomenon? Whether it's mountain biking, street biking, gravel grinders, we're slow to catch up. But do you see that this is going to be a sustainable part of our economy?
I think so, just because I think that they're, and it's happening in the big cities. Like if you go to Denver, there are so many of these bikes everywhere. And I think it's really becoming a part of specifically a younger culture of people. A lot less people are buying cars because there's a lot more Lyft, Uber options, ride sharing things. And I think that's going to be a continuing trend. For one thing, congestion is so bad. I just saw a report recently that actually in cities like Denver, driving in a car is slower than it was in a carriage back in the day because congestion has gotten so bad. So I just think that it's a viable option to actually make it so people can get around without owning a car.
And the Colorado Tourism Office, that's one of their big pull pushes this year is out to erect a bike lane.
As I've, as I've been looking around, there's a lot of state and national grants and incentives even that I'm looking into to try and help this along, especially with our limited infrastructure here. A lot of that goes into the design. I want to speak to your question about being economically sustainable going forward. And so the bikes themselves don't create any waste. The bikes will last until they start to fall apart and parts will be replaced as needed. My biggest responsibility on the backend is keeping them maintained and I make a daily round doing that. The lock on it is solar powered and so there's never a draw on any part of the economy. And then every part of the business is running the app interface. And so the entire business is actually a zero-waste business. It doesn't take anything away from anybody by having them anywhere. As long as people decide to use them, there are a long list of benefits that range from personal fitness to people just feeling better as they get to work or go through their day. And so there's a lock that a community has to gain from this happening, people on bikes. But a lot of that also goes hand in hand with the infrastructure wrapped around that to make sure that everything's running the same way.
Well, I guess my next question will go to the mayor. We've talked about toxic congestion. I'm wondering what the city is going to be doing about that. Secondly, because Main Street is so narrow, somewhat dangerous for bikers on Main Street, they're now riding on the sidewalks. I don't know if you've, if you've, you know, have been downtown much, but it, it is a danger. And I think it's really important for the city now to really actively get involved in some of the biking issues.
I do know that I did bring it up because of the issue a while back about marking some of the lanes, especially in, on our main and commercial. And I'm not sure where that's at right now, but I did bring it up at one of our city council meetings. They did mention, of course, that Arizona and Nevada, they're widening them to accommodate the wider or to the bike lanes event as well as traffic. So what I'll do is I'll bring that up again to see where they're at as far as...
Yeah, the other day...
Looking at the issues in the areas where it's narrow or there are no roads.
And I do know this, especially in front of the Chronicle news where there's the ramp. A lot of the kids now are trying to jump the ramp and they're on the sidewalks. I, I really can see something dangerous happening.
You know, Greg was sending something around. I'm sorry, Josh. Thank you so much. You can sit down if you like. I guess we're taking on a conversation.
A couple more comments I want to make just while I have time. The first one is that my bikes, the Giddyup bikes have a bell on them and so they're built in and it's easy to notify people so that people don't get hit. The second thing is, we've recently kind of updated our instructions. The ones I just handed out to you actually are under copies, but I'm still waiting on these to get printed. This is something that I think we're gonna put up around town because it just streamlines the process. If you take your camera, these are QR codes. They look like little barcodes. If you take your camera and you point your phone's camera at these, it'll automatically take you to the link that you need to download the app. And that takes that work out of it. It takes about ten to fifteen minutes for your first signup. And then I said like after that, it's five seconds on each end all the time. And I didn't say three dollars for a thirty-minute interval plus tax. I'm working on the taxing right now. Maybe we can get that cut back, but right now it's three dollars plus tax for a thirty-minute interval.
I do have one question for you. A tourist, a tourist comes in to, let's say, welcome Santa Claus to rent a bike. How do they know, let's say they want to just ride downtown and then park their bike so that they can walk around town? What kind of a map might they be able to have so that, where they can park that bike downtown so that they can do the thing and then...
Yeah, I was gonna do the same thing. So Rusty actually has downloaded this. When you download the app, the first thing it puts you on the page is a map of Trinidad. And all these P's are parking zones. And what that means is that all of those P's are bike racks that we've identified around town. And we have spoken to all the people who are involved in ownership of the bike racks. We allow people to just lock up to the bike racks.
And how are you going to accommodate those? I do not have any...
I believe that's part of you could go park.
That's, they're not able to use the system. To use the system, you need a smartphone and a credit card or debit card. You have to have those and that's just the way the system works. Nothing personal. Thank you guys for having me speak. If anybody has any questions, I'm going to leave some of my business cards on the table out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Mayor, Greg was sending an email around this week that I saw and I looked into and it was the difference between a street, a road, and a strode and how it affects economic impact into the city. And I really liked it because it taught me a little lesson. I love learning lessons. So a street is built for economic diversity, economic impact. So a street is something that you go from this block to that block. A road is something like I-25 is a road. You go from Trinidad to Pueblo. It's a road. Then there's a new thing now called a strode, right? So a strode is a, is a street that's turned into a road. But if you really want to increase your economic diversity in a small town, you should work on streets. So with that thought, you should have more stop signs. It's, so like Commercial Street is more of a street, right now? But Main Street is still a strode because we're allowed truckers everywhere to go down. If you put more stop signs, you create more of a street experience and it deters people from, from truckers from actually going down Main Street. They'll just take the highway to 160. And I really liked that thought process as I looked into the email that he sent out. I looked into other, you know, economic areas of cities and really people are starting to have a thought. So if you have to stop every block because you're a street, it's gonna be much more user-friendly for bicyclists. It'd be much less user-friendly for trucks. And to develop your downtown area like streets versus roads or strobes.
We have, we have, we have the three sets of stoplights on Main Street. The rest is just a flow through. And it makes sense as to if you do stop at a stop sign as you're looking around.
Yeah, so just stop at more stop signs. And it makes it safer for bikes because people don't race in between the two blocks.
We'll get with Greg on that.
Yeah, I thought it was great.
The only you'll do is it'll make all of the locals pretty upset.
But, but, I mean, we don't really want the economic impact in our downtown area, you know, so...
Mike, now I'm here. Mike, you go with us to announce the bicycle presentation where we'll have some information on what we're doing as far as bicycle tourism that's coming in.
So on April eighteenth, we have bicycle tourism information put on by the Tourism Board and it will be at the Masari. And you will see...
No, at the Pioneer Room.
Oh, in the Pioneer Room, sorry. The Pioneer Room at the college. So you will see information that's coming about, about that soon.
Do you have a time for the times?
What is it?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
We will have announcements in the paper and the radio on that.
Okay, works, the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, work session?
Do you want to go back to your grant app because...
Oh, are we doing now? Okay. Are there any special...
We can do them in the order that they applied. So a representative for Triggers Baseball.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, nice to see you. Thank you for this opportunity. Trinidad's, or Trinidad Triggers Professional Baseball Club. We're in our eighth season this year. I'm looking to do an equitable campaign to reach out in a fifty-mile radius to prospective fans and visitors to Trinidad. We have a fantastic schedule on, coming up, June first is our opening day and we'll roll through the end of July. The boys will arrive May twenty-third for spring training. So we'll have them in town for a good ten days before the season even begins. So I'm looking to do promotional opportunities and visits the best we can because when the season starts, the boys are on the road or they're working the field and playing in the evening. So we're really excited about this year. We have the All-Star Game again, first time in a row. So we'll be seeing teams from Kansas, Texas, New Mexico, and of course Colorado. So we're really excited about that. The campaign, I'm looking to put together an equitable campaign. It'll be pretty much bookends to the middle of the summer, Fourth of July campaign that we'll work on in the Main Street Board. So on the fringe of the season, I'm looking to reach out to the, you know, radius of Trinidad and promote the Triggers. Any thoughts, questions?
You know, I just, I have to commend you for going through all your years on Triggers, taking it up from the ground and the Triggers Reality Show and beating that buzz. All the stuff you've done to bring that here because if you don't attend the games in town, you don't realize all those boys that come into town have all their families that travel after them to watch them play. And it's really a delight at the hotel because all those families are so excited about being in Trinidad because they have a, a son, a grandson, and a nephew that's playing in a baseball game and they've come to Trinidad.
Well, it's rookie independent baseball and so we're, you know, we're right at that level and it's really exciting. You know, honestly, over the course of the last seven years of seasons, I, I say, you know, I've got easily three hundred sons out there in, you know, in the world from being in Trinidad. And Trinidad has become the Mecca for the Mountain Division of the Paco League. Everybody wants to play here. Trinidad's a very desirable area and it's because of how they are treated. With their host families, the businesses, the food, you know, Nancy bringing potluck to the All-Star Game. People contributing just, you know, all the time. And it really adds value to what we're doing. And so we'll also be reaching out to those other cities where the teams are located to promote the All-Star Game and get those folks here. It's, like I said, it's a desirable place to be and in the spectrum of the league, Trinidad has the best climate, you know, and hospitality. So again, I'm looking to put together an equitable campaign. It'll include radio, print, social media, and collateral material as well. A lot of that, and, and really I was looking at the campaign. I was looking at those, how that looked and I, I feel that it'll be more equitable. This was part of a buy that we did with the sourcing company. So again, you know, I try to do the best I can to bring people into Trinidad and I think we've got some items we can measure, just like you said, aside with visits to the hotel.
And how you do it in SERT, he does it with all the guys you have to put in houses in Trinidad and what you do to do hotel rooms and...
Well, and I, and honestly, I couldn't do it without people like you signing, you know, and the hospitality that you've given us from Relic Inc. and otherwise. You know, I mean, it's just across the board. Joey with Bricks. I mean, you know, we're just so thankful to be in this community where everybody gives. And we have to. There's so many variables and you're right. I mean, I'm a volunteer. I spend months and hours on this project. And sometimes I ask myself, what is this, you know, where do, where do I fit in this whole formula? But I feel that it's important for the community. I always have. I think it brings a lot of value to our community. There's cities all over the country that would just love to have professional team of any kind in their community. And, you know, thank you to the city for all of the opportunities in the field and, and all the support we receive there. And, you know, we're able to keep our beer license. We've gone from a three-two beer license to a six percent beer license. So I mean, you know, on our customer perspective, there's people that are really gonna appreciate that. And also, we've incubated several restaurants out of our location. First one being Back East Dogs, turning to the sub shop at the Whistle Stop, so I lost that vendor. And then we had Redneck Smoke out there for two years and now they're the Trinidad Smokehouse. So we're working on the Coalstone now. We'll see where they land in a couple of years. But popular place to be. We have thirty-two games. I've gotta work really hard to get people there. I put a whole lot of tickets into the community just because we want the volume. We want people there. Children nine and under are free. Veterans, students, and seniors are four dollars and general admission is six. And so, I mean, you know, it's really inexpensive entertainment for our community.
And it's really beautiful, the sound of a baseball hitting a baseball bat in the summertime, you know.
The smell of the grass, the, you know, all of it, yes. It's, it's everything that you said. It's all American. Well, okay, any questions?
Yeah, well, you do.
Okay. Thank you, but, thank you.
Can I be the speaker for the Main Street group as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And stay by that.
Love it. Okay, so the Trinidad Historic Main Street Campaign. This implies about ten days right in the middle of the summer. This year, we'll look to start the advertising campaign for events with the Santa Fe Trail Festival on the twenty-eighth of June. And we'll roll through that following weekend. I believe it lands on the eighth of July. So again, a full bore mixed media campaign. Again, I want to make it simple. I want to keep it simple. Last year, we used a contractor. We'll, I'll just be doing the buys myself and working with the board to get that done. I feel that it's a more equitable way to go and we can save some money that way. Willing to, to scale down, do whatever, you know, you all feel is necessary to get through the, the funding and everything. We've had great success. Thank you to the city for the fireworks and bringing that back to Trinidad, putting it right in the middle of town in Central Park with a baseball game and we run a festival all day long. And I really honestly, I'm expecting about twelve hundred people at the park this, this year. We had to cancel the fireworks at the last minute. Um, we were, had to cancel the fireworks at the last minute last year and so that affected attendance to some degree. Um, but, you know, things like that occur. So, thankfully, we might be in a good position this year with snow packed.
Kim, one question I do have.
Yes.
Was at the top of the page, are we having fireworks this year?
We have a show that's already booked.
Okay.
That we lost last year, so that contract is still in play.
Okay, so that's not part of your existing budget or?
No, that is separate.
Okay.
That is actually right under the city of Trinidad.
Oh, okay, so the city pays for that?
Yes, oh, they do, thank you.
Yeah.
And I think the community really appreciates it. I mean, we had to stop fireworks in 2004 and I was part of that initiative because, you know, I was at the Chamber of Commerce. And there wasn't any funding at all for fireworks. And so, you know, the town, you could have blown a cannon down Main Street on 4th of July weekend because nobody was here. So, our push is to keep people here, to bring people here and to, you know, exploit our resources and have a really good holiday weekend.
Right, and I'm on a lot of flip sides of this because, you know, I run a hotel, I, I'm on the Main Street group, so I abstained from any of this. But, um, but from that point of view, you could look records wise, Mayor, but July 4th was totally down. July 4th occupancy in hotels used to be really low in town because, I mean, not low, 70%, which is low when you sell out, you know, most of July. Because everybody left town. Nobody had family reunions, nobody had stuff here. And now, since we've done fireworks and the stuff downtown area, all the hotels are packed on July 4th, it's just.
Oh, absolutely.
It's like, it was so weird, like, you would think it was July 4th and you would think, why aren't you busy in town? But everybody left because they did a family reunion somewhere else. But now the hotels are full again and it's really a delight. And the amount of stuff that you guys do, I'm on the board, but you guys do so much is incredible.
Well, we're thankful to do it, this is gonna be the fourth year we've had this event.
Yeah.
Last year was the only year we didn't have the fireworks. The fireworks show has been fantastic, uh, everybody's been great to work with. The city works real hard, I mean, we have to do a 24-hour security piece when fireworks arrive and they're. I mean, it takes those guys at least four days to set the mortars for that show, I mean, it's a big show.
And you might want to add, the, the, you're working with the entertainment district, this, Main Street's working with the entertainment district somewhat.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to devise an equitable plan for everybody, we need some more input on that. Um, but we will definitely be putting together a clearinghouse of all the events that will be occurring in, you know, the community and, and surrounding area. Uh, as part of our calendar and that'll be part of the collateral piece, you know, you're gonna see flyers or posters with events lined out. From whether it's venue or theater or the, the park activity or the Santa Fe Trail Festival or the All-Star Game. I mean, there's a lot happening because the All-Star Game's on the 30th of June. So, we'll roll through that entire time and then obviously on the backend, whatever's happening with the Comedy Festival and things of that nature.
Right.
So, we feel that it's been a pretty successful campaign. I'd like to reach out to the, you know, West Texas Panhandle area, include that in the campaign and then, you know, devise the 50-mile radius from there. So, I'm open to any input, any of the board has, any thoughts? Keep the branding in line, everything, so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, Kim, you know, I do have a suggestion. I've tried to make the suggestion for the past three years and it's like a full on death air. Uh, there's a gentleman that has, you know, horse and buggy that's been boncable. And he's willing to offer those rides to people, I'm sure there'll be a cost for these people, but it, it'd be an added attraction.
It'd be great, I'd be happy to have the contact and I'm sorry, that's been missed, I was unaware of that.
I can't, uh, ride them two, three different times the last few years.
Sure.
But I think it'd just be added attraction.
Anything that we can do to, you know, give it that all-American home feel that we have, so.
Okay, I'll get you this.
Sounds great, thank you. And that goes for anybody, or any suggestions or anything we want to bring to the table because it is a community event. And so, we want to feature that. So, um, you know, we're, can't be everywhere all the time, we're all running businesses and doing our thing. And again, this is a volunteer piece, so, you know, I want to get it out the door.
And Julie, is she still planning on doing the water parade during that time period?
I'm not exactly sure.
Yes, I spoke with her yesterday, yes. It is confirmed, assuming the city gives approval, it will be at 11 o'clock and our event starts at noon.
Nice, beautiful, nice. Yeah, hopefully, we can have some of those elements this year. You know, we didn't, we weren't able to use any of our natural resources last year, you know, the fire and the spraying and things of that nature. So, you know, we'll hopefully look to do that again this year.
One of the things I haven't seen is a lot of the art galleries having shows. Have you ever gone to a dam as to them being a participant in?
Well, as a matter of fact, um, yes.
Yes, I spoke to Mel last night.
First Friday Art Walk, first Friday Art Walk at least starting, I believe, this month. And it'll roll, so July the 5th will be that event. So, it'll, we'll come right off of 4th of July and segue right into that.
Cause I think a collaboration of all of that is what's gonna bring a lot of people.
Well, and we're campaigning on the, like Marketplace events and all the little craft events for the next, you know, few months. We have our application ready, we're inviting those folks out to the park to have a little booth. You know, the one thing is, we don't have electricity and water out there. So, we're limited, I can bring in some food, but I mean, I can't bring in too much because there's no ability to do that. And just having a short little show during the day with these craft vendors and such should be fine because, you know, we can rock them all without lights or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you guys do a really good job, I mean, I've been to a lot of your guys' events, I think your board is doing great, so.
Thank you, Joey, I was looking at pictures of the bike parade and saw the kids out there and it's just, you know, it really, it's such a feel-good thing and it's so simple. But, you know, decorating your bike and riding around the park and everybody brings their bike and, you know, I mean, just things of that nature, the apple pie piece.
The watermelon contest was so hilarious.
The watermelon contest is, Phil Long sponsors that, it's turned into just a, we went from two tables, now we're like, it's six tables long, people wrapped around it.
And they have their hands behind them, if anybody's ever seen that, and everybody's got their face inside of a watermelon.
But, I think that's what our duty is on a board is to make sure we keep all our tourists and all our locals in town during these events.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're not in town, we're not creating, you know, sales tax or logging tax or none of that. So, I think as many events we can create would be awesome, you know, even more, so.
Yes, and, you know, media and staying, the communication piece, you know, events take a lot of thought and implementation. And we want to be, you know, right on task with what we're doing, especially for closing streets and things of that nature. Um, you know, so, so yeah, Trinidad's moving along. I, I've been doing shows here since 2003 and we've done some meetings and things of that nature. And it's just, it's a really good time to be in Trinidad right now because we actually have some budgets in place to implement some things, so. Thank you for, for all y'all do and if you have any comments or suggestions or anything for me, please, you know, it's how to get ahold of me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, just, just a quick.
No, it's okay.
I'm, I need your.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, we do have a timer, but the batteries are dead and since we have 13 presentations, we live on.
Okay, what's the time, Kelly? Um, Trinidadian Blues Fest, you're resting.
Short and sweet, I'll speed her up. So, um, once again this year, Trinidadian Blues Fest along with the pre-pre fest party, pre, pre, pre-fest party downtown. So, we've seen our numbers increase, uh, every year from 2017, we had estimated 4,600 people in Trinidad. Last year, that year, we spent in the vicinity of $38,000 on advertising. Last year, we increased that budget up and targeted the Springs and Denver area with a television campaign to try to attract more. Dane Tripper spends our hotels are full, we have spillover into Raton, how, how could we increase our numbers? We figured if we could target people that would drive here, see the event and go home to get our numbers up. Our campaign last year were, seemed to be very effective and our numbers increased from 4,617 to around 5,200 people in 2018. So, we're gonna hit the TV ads and everything really hard again this year. That's the one area that we refuse to cut our budget is in our advertising. Um, with funding being cut, we've made adjustments in other areas to accommodate that. But through our advertising, this one area, we're not willing to do that. Therefore, we're back again this year asking for the Tourism Board, uh, for our money. I know that we had set this up on a monthly, um, payment. I know we're a little late getting this going, we still feel that that amount per month would still allow us to succeed in our advertising campaign. That's all I have.
Thanks, Rusty, thanks for how hard you guys worked, what a signature event for Trinidad. I mean, small towns would hope that it can get 5,000 people and, and the caliber of what you do, it can be a national event. I, there's no problem advertising this in New York City, it's that good of an event.
It is, people come from literally all around the world and we have people from both coasts and everything that are here every year. Telluride likes to boast that they have the number one Blues Fest in the state of Colorado. Uh, for the money and the bang that you get, I would dispute that fact that Trinidad has the number one Blues Fest in the state of Colorado. I have the Save the Date, just a, a small, uh, um, advertising deal that we get out early that's already out. I've left a stack of these outside on the table, we're happy for anybody to take them and post them wherever you would like. Uh, we have soon our posters that'll have the full lineup, uh, lineups and the Save the Date so we can have them at all the hotels, dispensaries and everything else. To catch the kickoff with the 4:20 and the early tourism, so people are seeing, uh, don't forget Trinidad for the state.
Awesome.
Okay, Rusty, I'm, um, on a different note. What if, you know, the Tourism Board, we talked a little bit about this amongst ourselves, is if we created a guitar, purchased a guitar and had all the artists sign it, we could raffle that off.
Yes.
You know, I think it'd be a good thing, you know, if all these tourists are coming from all over, you know, the world, I think it'd be a cool thing, you know.
Oh, it's a great way to, it's a fun creature.
We'd be, we'd be glad, uh, we could do the same thing we do with the Trinidad Fire Department Toy Drive, that's what they do. And it's a big portion of the money they raise for buying the toys for kids in needs. All you would need would have somebody on the grounds, uh, we would allow them in, we would get them backstage, um, get all your signatures, sell the raffle tickets, have a booth set up and everything. Um, it's not gonna hurt to give away multiple guitars.
Then you sold $10 tickets and 5,000 people bought them, it would be $50,000 and it would help fund your next year's Blues Fest, that's such a great idea.
That is a good idea, the only thing, you gotta be careful with the raffle, the app is stable. But, there is a possibility that you can participate with the Trinidad Community Foundation, we do hold the raffle license.
That's a great idea.
The only thing that you'd have to do is whoever sells, what the entity has to be a member of the Trinidad Community Foundation. So, you can get a loose supplement on that and we can try to help them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'll be your.
Cause a lot of people buy two, three tickets.
Another, another good thing is maybe we could bring the art community in and maybe a painting of a, of a guitar, that could be a signature thing also.
You bet.
One of the things I'd like to say, I was in DIA on Thursday and there was a guy wearing a, a blue shirt, Trinidad, Trinidadian Blues shirt. And, uh, he was from a band that played here and I think so many people are coming to this event that this guy expressed to me that they really want to come back. You know, and that's when you have the bands wanting to come back, that's even bigger than the people wanting to come and see because they like playing this event.
We're in a very unique situation where most venues go out and reach out through booking agents, uh, for booking the bands. We actually have booking agents calling us, uh, when can we come back? We were here at this date or we've never played, but we've heard about your event, what do we gotta do to get in there? And you're talking about Robert Randolphs and the people who are putting out the number one blues albums and receiving the Grammys and everything else contacting us. It speaks volumes about the caliber of the event that we put on and how we treat the people that are here.
Awesome.
Good.
I'll get with you on that because I'm actually the raffle manager at the.
Fantastic, we're always.
I'll guide you through that.
Always looking forward. All right, thank you guys.
Thanks, Rusty.
You bet.
So, Kirby has a, you're so right. Who's on the chair? Well, Kirby has an appointment at 10 o'clock, so I'm gonna move her from the bottom up a bit. Come on, Kirby.
Um, the Colorado Trust is meeting me at the museum, so I have to literally run here. Uh, thank you so much for having us and for allowing us to speak. My name's Kirby Stokes, I'm the Director of the Trinidad History Museum, that's the Baca Blue House Downtown. Last year, we were in a Friday night concert series, it was really successful, we had about 30 to 50 people every night. Um, we would like to grow that to include tourists, um, so it was mainly local residents, which is really exciting and wonderful. But we submitted that marketing plan to hopefully go out and reach some more folks, um, that are in the area to encourage them to stay overnight, to come enjoy that free music on the lawn. Um, most of the people that come to the event enjoy the music and then go out to Main Street and eat downtown at Bricks and Moose's and things like that. Um, so, uh, sort of the program, I think actually all of you were at a night at some point, so, um, any questions, comments?
No, we reviewed all the grants yesterday, so this is just the top, you know, you just so, you have to go, we understand, we did review stuff. I just have to say that museum has never been one better.
Thank you, thank you so much, it's such an honor, town is wonderful and I'm super fortunate and lucky.
Yeah, thank you, Kirby.
Yeah, thank you, Kirby, sorry, everyone.
Uh, Branson High Low Gravel Grinder, Ms. Christine Loudon.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to present before you today. Um, my event is a little bit different, um, it's a brand-new startup event, um, based in Branson, Colorado. And we really, I'm really looking for some support from the town of Trinidad, who is our hub. Because as you may know, Branson does not have a restaurant or a hotel or a bike shop or anything that is going to support the riders who are gonna be able to come. So, I see Trinidad, the city of Trinidad playing a big role in the success of our event. Um, and that's why I'm, I'm hoping that you will help us, um, provide some funds to do some promotion. Um, and because if we're really going to present the area of Trinidad and Los Angeles County as a biking hub, we need to promote as many events as possible. So that, you know, just the more people hear about Los Angeles County and how wonderful the riding is around Trinidad and the area, um, you know, the more, the more we're just gonna grow and attract riders and visitors. So, um, I'm hoping that, um, you will help support. And I'm, I'm really looking for ideas of how, um, I can work with the city of Trinidad to, um, do some other cross-promotion. Um, ideas I had were, um, inviting some restaurants to come out and serve food after the event. Um, I'm happy to support, uh, the accommodations here, um, and anything else. So, I'm very open to suggestions, um, from your side.
I, I love it, you, you know, I, I remember seeing the pictures last year on your, your initial and they were wonderful, I was impressed with how many people came out, it was really great. You know, it'd be really cool if, um, after the event, if they could come down to, I know both Bricks and Moose's are really, um, trying to do as much as they can. You're really good about the bikers and the posters could have in there and maybe afterwards, if you bring your bike to either one of those places, get 10% off or a free beer for those that show a registration thing or something. Um, but some sort of a relationship like that, I'll surely give discounted rates at the hotel if, if you choose to do that. But I, I, I love it that it's a win-win, I love that we get people downtown Trinidad and out and get air in their lungs out there. So, yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to, to whatever that we can do to help the, you know, promote the biking and, and your event. How many miles is your gravel grinder?
Uh, it's 48.1, exactly, uh, we are promoting it as a 50-mile bike ride. Um, and that is mixed gravel and pavement. And then we'll have a shorter loop that is 100% gravel and that's 27 miles.
Okay, and I think for a lot of people that, uh, this terminology is very new to them and they don't really understand the demographics of the people that go to these events. Uh, they're high in median income, they're high in their, uh, travel trailer, uh, expenses of what they purchase and what they take from city to city. And their, their, their bikes are very expensive and customized. It isn't, it's a totally different venue than Gideon. Um, and it is a huge multi-multi-million dollar industry that's really emerging in our country. Um, are you also, uh, working with Mr. Delaroca?
Yes, I am.
Uh-huh.
Um, I met with Juan early on, uh, actually last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we talked about ways that we could help each other promote biking within Los Angeles County.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we are on his Explore Los Angeles County website.
Yes.
And, um, I would like to promote our event also at the Southwest Chief Event and Pony Express Event plus Juan's Explore Los Angeles County Bike Series.
Right.
So, you know, because if somebody is coming here once, they may want to come back and to show. And to show them all the variety of rides that are available here. Because you're always looking for something new and a new place to go and a new ride and a new experience. So I, I only think that we can help each other build, um, a better, um, network of, of supporters and visitors.
Is there a winner on the gravel grinder? Is there like?
Well, I, I did want to have it as a race, but I think this year it will be a tour, but I am planning to have, um, a special prize. Because we are in Branson and everything is kind of cowboy and rodeo and, you know, the ultimate, um, prize you could get out there is a belt buckle. So I'm gonna do belt buckles for the top male and female finisher.
And forty-eight miles is a long thing. So from Branson, just kind of, how, how do you do forty-eight miles?
Uh, we'll start in Branson and then go west to Trinchera.
Uh-huh.
And then up over Trinchera Pass to Johnson Mesa.
Wow.
Then we're gonna travel down Johnson Mesa into Folsom, New Mexico. So actually, this is, this is a good point. There's a good opportunity to, to market with New Mexico as well. Um, so I think that's also very important to our message, uh, because we've got a lot of friends over there who wanna support us. I think we wanna support them. It's a win-win.
Right.
So we go into Folsom, New Mexico and then back up historic Tulgate Canyon into Branson. So it's a wonderful, beautiful. Um, you really get to see, it's high-low country, so we've got the mazes and the canyons and you experience everything in two states.
Yeah, I've been through all of that.
Because, you know, as, you know, we try to develop this area as a destination area, which really does add to it and I'll tell you why. When we closed on Fishers Peak property, uh, we met with the Goko people and the Goko people mentioned that in order for a, an area to be considered a destination where people will wanna go to for like the biking and this, they require about fifty to seventy miles of trails. So this is a good start along with everything else that we could have in here in Trinidad. And at some point in a couple of years, we'll probably have the fifty, uh, Fishers Peak area as well. So I think this is a really a tremendous start to be able to promote Trinidad and Los Angeles County as the destination for biking. I think it's a good idea. Uh, you did mention about trying to get food to the area. I've tried to talk to the cold stove to maybe go out there and have food at four in the morning after the day.
I have not.
If that doesn't work, you might even check with Mario. He's the burrito guy in town. You might wanna go out there, you never know. He's pretty good at that. And the other thing that Marty brought up is there's people that will probably come into town that will have RDs, RVs. There's no place to park RDs, but they might be self-sustained, but afterwards they need to dump. You may wanna talk to the Trinidad Lake to see if you give them a card or something that they participated and they need to have dumping facilities to see if they're able to go up there and have a, you know, be able to dump. I know that there's a, I don't know if they can do that out here at the, uh, at our race facility out here. You might check with Greg.
Okay.
Cause when I had, uh, when I had a trailer years ago, I remember going out there a couple of times and dumping myself. I'm not sure if they still allow that or will allow that.
Thank you. Mayor, the, back to the maps and the mileage. Uh, the county roads that have been mapped out by Explore Los Angeles County Dirt Series is, uh, exceeding a hundred and fifty miles of county roads. And Camilla, and I think, is it you Joey or Tom that's working on a map?
It's, uh, just Camilla.
Just, okay. So maps for Branson, all the other county roads. I think that we're really in a very good spot because it's been pointed out to me, when you're in a major city, it takes you two hours even to get to a county road. Whereas here, uh, you can be in, in the county in five, ten minutes.
I think actually you're on the lower end of it, cause if you really look at all the county roads, we're probably looking at excessive, like six hundred miles.
Yeah, well, those are the only one, those miles have been documented because of private property rights, but these are actual county roads. So it's like a candy store to bikers.
Yes, and that brings up a good point. We have tried to utilize county roads, um, because there is sensitivity to private property uh, within our neck of the woods. Um, so we are trying to stay on county roads and really get our local community accustomed to having bikers out there and being part of the ecosystem that is greater Los Angeles County. And then I'm hoping that we, I can make some inroads into some more exclusive rides that would be on private property. But it's, it's really baby steps and I see this as the first step, but it's still a big one.
Yeah.
Great.
Joe, are you speaking for the Mitchell today too?
I'm not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Southwest Chief Festival, Wally Walton.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, so yeah, we are a month out, just under a month out now from the festival. We are bringing at least eighty comedians to town. Yeah, so we're having twenty-five comedy showcases throughout the weekends. Um, we're gonna be recording seventeen live podcasts at the funeral home. And, uh, we are working with Juan de La Roca on a seventy-two mile gravel grinder ride. That'll be happening on the Saturday.
Whoa, so where's that seventy-two, do you know the seventy-two route?
Um, it's on our website. Um, I, I can't tell you specifically all the details on that.
That's huge. Seventy-two miles.
Another, another gravel grinder, imagine.
He's got two places to dump off for people that don't wanna do the entire seventy-two miles where they can easily get off and head back to town.
Wanna go hear jokes.
Yeah, so, and that'll be happening, yeah, Saturday during the day. Most of the comedy stuff in the evening, except on Saturday, we're gonna be having family-friendly comedy stuff at the library during the day. And our podcasts will be recording earlier on and, uh, yeah, and that's a day that just the comedy starts a little bit earlier.
Are, are ma- are many of these comedians also bike riders?
Um, some of them, but I, I would say a small percentage of them, so. And I'm encouraging them all to bring bikes down, um, but I only know of like a handful of them that are really serious bikers. Um, yeah, and then we are, yeah, just trying to get as many people in the community involved as we can. We're working with Steve Wharton to pro- uh, produce a program guide of the festival. And we've gotten some great support locally for that. Um, our main sponsors, Big Top Studios, they're based in LA and Denver and they're the ones who really finance this to allow us to try and start this thing off. And if everything goes well, we'd like to make it a signature event that we can do every year.
I think it's extremely creative to go LA to Chicago on a train and stop off here.
Well, like, I think.
Genius.
Yeah, I think there's some sort of, something that we have to work with with that because we're also halfway between Denver and Santa Fe. So, you know, we're like a great halfway point for all these places in America. I was gonna go find other places that were halfway in between. Cause I think there's something there, like, you know.
They're there.
It's, there's something in that, but I don't know what it is.
I just thought it was super unique that we were the exact middle station between Chicago and LA. It costs exactly the same amount to go to Chicago as it does LA. Takes about the same amount of time, even though it doesn't seem like it because of the time changes.
I don't know if you've heard of the one ninety club, but that's what dinner parks, one ninety club is about. It's one ninety from Santa Fe and one ninety from Denver.
Yeah, totally. And we are, we're bringing in twenty comedians by train from Chicago and LA and Kansas City. And then, uh, we're bringing in comedians from Albuquerque and Denver is rock and, and Durango, many different Colorado towns. But most of the comedians are coming from Denver and with some coming from Albuquerque as well.
How many are coming from LA, did you say?
Um, from, from LA, we are bringing twelve.
I said, I could say it's from south or to, for the west coast.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yep, twelve comedians on the train from LA and then we're bringing in comedians also from Chicago and Kansas City.
The reason why I bring that up is I'm going to be at my Southwest Chief entrant meeting this next week and I can relay this information.
Cool. Honestly, we wanted to bring more comedians, but we were, we were over ambition in the beginning and we got them all sleeper cars and it's just like we didn't have the money to buy everybody sleeper cars. But at least we know all the comedians will be happy, taken care of, fed, everything on their trip out here and go back and say, man, what a great time they had. So we can get more people excited about it next year and maybe convince someone to not come in sleeper cars.
Right. Other way, home, more chairs.
I will say, we had our first comedy night Saturday night, which, Wally, really was exceptionally helpful in promoting. Uh, we have a maximum seating capacity of forty-five and we were all full except for maybe three or four chairs. Um, and it was really great. After the si- after the event was over, the comedians stayed and talked and hung out and it was a, a long night, but it was fun and I think it's gonna be great for Trinidad.
We've had six comedy shows here so far, just cause we're trying to kind of build the culture, get people used to coming to comedy shows and stuff. And all of them have been really great. All of the comedians have loved it. They've gone back to Denver. I specifically have gone back to Denver myself and everyone just keeps telling me how much the comedians are talking about, how much fun they've had coming back to Trinidad.
The, the people in this area are used to laughing.
Yeah. Whatever we're working on. So bicycles and comedy, I think they're both, uh, fun things.
I don't remember seeing a comedy fest this big nowhere else, you know, with that many comedians coming into town. Is there one in Denver like that or is it?
Yes, there, there's the High Plains Comedy Festival in Denver and that, that is really kind of the blueprint of how we started planning this out as I've worked with the High Plains Comedy Festival for the past several years. And they bring over a hundred comedians, or they have over a hundred comedians, but they have the luxury.
For capital, we gotta be the largest, right?
We get, I.
If Denver's got a hundred, there's about eighty, you know?
Yeah, totally. There is, in Oregon, there's the Bridge Town Comedy Festival, which is kind of like a campout comedy festival where they, I can't say the exact number of comedians that they have, but that one is a large one that is pretty prestigious around the country. But they didn't have one this year, so that's part of the reason of why, like, let's make ours the new big camping comedy festival, even though we're not with camping this year.
So, so a month out, how, how is ticket sales going?
Um, we have sold, we've sold about fifty tickets so far, um, which I've been told by a lot of people, this is a last-minute comedy, I mean, last-minute ticket town. So I think we're doing fairly well. Uh, but then also with our sponsorship packages, we've been, when people buy a program guide ad, we've also been giving them tickets. And at that point, we've probably got another fifty people at least coming through that. And then like I said, we got the eighty comedians. We've actually, I've been doing a promotional campaign on Facebook in all of the train towns that if people take the, well, if people had purchased their train tickets before this month, uh, we'd give them a free pass for the festival. And we have about ten people coming on the train to take advantage of that. Um, and, yeah, like, we're, it, it's gonna be rough as a first-year thing, getting the word out there and stuff like that, but we're really pushing hard and we've been hanging posters all over New Mexico, Colorado, Kansas, Texas, all the bike shops and from Denver south have posters.
We're, we're excited for you. I was at the first Blues Fest and there was probably only about a hundred and fifty of us.
And honestly, the thing about it is we're doing it in venues. We're not doing it outdoors. And even though there's a lot of great venues in town, there, there's not a huge venue. And so kind of our hope was that we could do this as a pretty modest but packed event. And over the years grow to the point that when the Fox Theater is ready to start having people there again, we can really make this a big.
Well, I wanna thank you because this is the kind of things that the tourism board would like to, to help you out with. Um, the way it's put together and I just think it's really a good project.
I really appreciate that.
Well, it's a very thorough package.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Wally, have you talked, wanted to talk to like the Kiwanis Club at their, you know, the Rotary Club and some of those clubs in Trinidad to get, help get the word out?
I did go to the Rotary Club meeting, uh, in January and told them all about it and, yeah, I need to join at some point. I've just been a little busy, but.
So you can just go to Chamber of Commerce.
Yes. Yep, I've been going to the January Commerce Networking Events in the mornings and to the launch in. Um, I really have been trying to connect with pretty much everybody.
You could even probably get ahold of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce as well.
I have knocked on a little bit and they are actually having an event this same weekend, but.
But you could let them know at least, you know, they might be people that.
Yeah, no, I think it's great to have an event that weekend too.
Awesome. Cool.
It's a good thing. Having music and something live on the street while you're doing stuff inside the establishments only adds to the more excitement of Trinidad.
Totally.
Yeah.
Curiosity and that's good things for people from the motels down.
You know, the other places you could advertise, uh, to get with Brian Landron and Martin Lake.
Okay.
Cause there are people that are, will be, you know, he fills up pretty well on the weekends, but people may want additional stuff to do beside fishing.
Yeah, totally. I did go up there. I, I put posters in Stonewall and around that area. At the Thai Monument Lake was pretty low-key. I wasn't sure if they were actually open, but I'd love to give them some more information.
You need to take them some, some small brochures or they can hand out anything that registers for you.
Yeah, totally. And I do have some new posters that we printed out that are a little bit smaller that have a whole brochure that says on the festival that we're gonna be getting around as well. Um, but yeah, we've also been doing some extensive radio advertising up in Denver and the, on the comedy radio station, uh, and on Mile High Sports. We bought a big ad of them that came with a hundred radio spots. Um, so we're trying to get it out to all the bicycle and comedy people around those areas. And then we are also working at the local radio stations here to do some.
You know, I know, I know I've worked with you on some of the rooms and stuff, but is there any way we could advertise even like, you know, a, a combination package for, you know, the rooms and?
I do have it on our website. Nobody has purchased that yet, but we have, we do have a package that does say that we were in our rooms for them and get everything set up that way.
You know, when you might check with, I'm not sure if it'll lie or do anything, but the lady at the Trinidad Lake.
Okay.
Crystal?
Crystal.
Yes, I, I actually did first contact them. We were looking into, honestly, the big thing was the cost of cars per day was gonna start adding up. And so we just, and since this has ended so early in the year, we're trying to put as many people in hotels as possible so that we don't have to worry about anyone having a terrible rain-out experience or sometimes in May it snows, so.
You got enough people out there, you may be all the value you can have.
Yeah, yeah, totally. I did look at like group camps, I took.
Good problem with that.
And that will be a lot more feasible as the Boulevard Edition continues and it's easier to get out to that area on a bicycle too.
I believe you will.
Alright, well, thank you all.
Santa Fe Trail Days Festival, Ms. Linda Vera.
And Mr. Jack Israel. Hi Linda, good morning, Martin, the president and a member of the board, the mayor and, uh, Marty, lady in general.
My name is Will Madara. I'm here representing the Trinidad, Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce. This year, the Santa Fe Trail will be June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We'll be back downtown Trinidad.
Well, that's a difference from.
Yes, last, the last time I did, we helped Trinidad, uh, Chamber of Commerce with the Santa Fe Trail was when Mr. Um, uh, Si Michael was the president, that was two thousand and one.
That was a long time ago.
A long time ago. Yes, and, uh, we, I got back to Trinidad, I mean, with the board on two thousand and fourteen. It's the reason for, because we didn't do it in fourteen, uh, because of the difficult thing that we have for the chamber. So fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, we do it out in the, uh, uh, Central Park. And, uh, because of the, um, commercial street was, uh, construction for coming here and then also Main Street for the third year. Well, this year we decide this is the time to go back. And the chamber have been doing this in nineteen eighty. So this year will be thirty-nine year for the Santa Fe Trail. Um, we also celebrate the hundred and thirty-eighth year with the chamber. So, um, what we have, what I have here is remember this site, this town, the smell of the summer celebration in your hometown. When you appear, happy day return to historic downtown El Corazon de Trinidad. National history, historic district is summer during the Santa Fe Trail Festival with even including art and food vendor, parade and performer, clean blue sky, warm suns, warm sunshine, crown smile face and load of great food be playing everywhere you can imagine. Trinidad, Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce is committed to continuing the traditional of the perfect, the Santa Fe Trail Festival downtown. And we here to ask you for help. We thank you for, in the past, we would not have able to do it without all the help that we can get. So, uh, Jack Israel, Mr. Israel here is our, um, board of directors as a treasurer. If you have any question, he will be asked the answer.
Linda, is that the eighth and ninth or the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. This year we have, usually, usually we do the second weekend of June. But because we're doing downtown, we need more time to prepare this year.
Is that the same as the, um, offering?
The twenty eighth, no, it's the Friday and Saturday, yes, it's the weekend.
Right before the fourth.
Okay.
That's, that also leads up to the treasurer's all-star game.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think it's so awesome that you're bringing it back downtown, it's where it should be. Um, I really think it's, you know, something that the mayor said about that buggy and stuff, just sort of like the historical part of the Santa Fe Trail, too. Um, I know that they did like cold car runs and other things, I don't know, I don't know if there's any historical things planned. We did have a cold cart race, uh, that year, and I think Nancy brought it up, so I'm looking into possibly doing a cold cart race again this year, so. Okay. Um, you say that this is gonna be downtown, so is this part of the entertainment district or the streets closed? And what does it commercial and?
Yes, the, uh, we'll be closed on Animas all the way down to, uh, Mabel.
Uh-huh.
And then Promoso, low down to Palm, I believe.
Okay, yes. But it's not an entertainment district, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Okay.
And one of the reasons for not having the entertainment district involved is that because of alcohol sales?
The alcohol sales actually are a lot of the income that we get, and this is a fundraiser for the chamber.
So we've been able to pay for the entertainment and all.
So you'll have a beer garden on, on main, okay.
Well, actually, it'd actually be on commercial, right beside the workforce department out there, where we're putting in a new
Bathroom?
Restrooms.
Same, and Main Street's getting together to do a mural on that wall, too. This is exciting. So, no, did I have a question? No, thank you. Back to the beer sales. Um, so you'll be in the parking lot on commercial, but then is it within a fenced area, they cannot take their beer and walk?
Right, it'll be within a fenced area.
Is the stage in that same area for?
Stage being there.
So the stage isn't gonna be in front of, between main and commercial like they do in the Blues Pre-Fest?
Well, it'll be, well, we're doing a combination, we're gonna have, uh, set up at main and commercial itself, uh, more of a family entertainment, and then we're gonna have bands in the beer garden itself.
So they'll be vendors, they'll be vendors from Animas to make and on commercial?
Yes, we have low rider, biker, we have auto cake, when we bring that car out. We have the, uh, entertainment come from port low for the Spanish dance, uh, Indian dance, and, you know, that's family uh, that, that we designate for on Main Street. And then on Promoso is more like for, you know, because of the beer garden and we have food. It's depending on where, where the electricity gonna be for the food vendor.
And what about the Ferris wheel, where will that be?
We work on. We have, uh, you know, we, we still working on, uh, for the entertainment, we already booked that we need because we don't wanna go over our budgets, you know, we, we wanna be very careful with that. As you know, that's one of the reasons that we cannot do on Main Street for the last four years. We take a baby step, and, uh, now that we hope that we can, we asking for everybody to helping us, I have asked, uh, Marty to help because he have worked with the chamber before.
The two of you, the, I'm sorry, the two of you have just, to be commended, all of you have helped the chamber over the years on a volunteer basis, it's amazing.
One of the things is the city's supposed to be putting power on Main Street between First National Bank and the old Hosman Building. You might look to see if they're gonna have that up by then, because they are gonna have it up for the Blues for that night. We usually pull a generator there.
Let me check on that, 'cause I know that was going to.
They were, we usually had a generator there, but they were gonna.
There was something about that, let me, let me check who was actually installing this, there was a, at least that's what the city thinks, but I'm not sure what's happening.
Well, there was gonna be permanent power there, and then that way at least you would know that there was power there for any event that you wanted to have in that particular area right there.
Yes.
And we're very excited for coming back to downtown.
I, I am too. I went to, to Seattle, to a small town in Seattle, it's called Fremont, and they had a festival that had been, uh, grown, and they were in their twenty-fifth year. They were actually twenty-six blocks long, and they were a community smaller than us.
Twenty-six blocks, wow.
And they had vendors, and they had, they had an art show going on, and they just had so much, and, and that's where I'd like to see this venue. Stay there on Main Street.
Yeah, I think that, uh, Ms. Si Michael, remember two thousand and one, when we do our, uh, the last time that I were helping you when you were the president, we have, I mean, the street were full of, not to, to, also, also the local. Our local people resident here, their family work out of town, and they come back just for that weekend. And that's what I've been hearing, is, you know, oh, yes, you know, it's so exciting about Main Street and, you know, downtown. And we want to thank you, the city and the tourism board. And what we do is we, uh, advertise with KCRT, KBKZ, KRTN, Connor Canoe, the wonderful to us for many, many years, and with the new people now, I'm sure that they continue to do so. Um, the World Journal, the Popular Chieftain, uh, Amarala Newspaper. So I'm trying, you know, we trying to do, let it out and get everybody know that we are downtown.
Okay, thank you. Awesome, thank you so much.
I think what you mentioned, too, is coming back downtown. I think we're gonna try to go back to getting the Santa Fe Trail, the history into it again.
Right, absolutely, 'cause we, yeah, used, we used to have some, I still remember Lou Gerotto dressed up in his sheriff at the time, and it was very good. But, yeah, thank you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. We're realizing the time here, so. Allison Sheumaker is not here, uh, Community Farmers Market, Coaches are not here, First Friday's Art Work, Mr. Truby is not present. Uh, that brings up Music and Lyrics Festival in the Trinidad Terrafest, Julie and Kirk Groudon and, right?
The Terrafest is first?
Uh, Music and Lyrics Festival is first? Hi, guys.
Good morning. Alright, I'll, the gear is on, we'll quick here. This is a handbill from, um, last year's event, and so what we're proposing is we wanna have our second annual Music and Lyrics Festival. Uh, last year, we kicked it off, and we, um, initially uh, partnered with the Creative District, and, um, the city generously matched the funds of their grant, uh, for that, um, initial budget. And so the way it works is, um, we're trying to continue a win-win situation where, uh, business owners are going to be able to, um, have the opportunity to sell, you know, additional food and beverage. All we do is ask that we can, you know, more or less use the venue, and we've brought in, um, uh, last year entertainment from California, Texas, New Mexico, um, public city?
No, we didn't make it.
Okay. Denver, Buffalo. But the way it works is that you buy a, a wristband, and this is just like last year, and so it's, it's all-inclusive, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold. For, uh, to be able to go to all of the events, so for instance, uh, the way we chronologically worked through it last year is that we started over at Skate Land. We had karaoke for the kids and skating and face painting, and then the music started, uh, over at Moose's. And then it bounced across the street, uh, to, um, S C R T. Then we went down the street onto the patio at Tees Me Treat Me, and then that was followed by, uh, going over to, uh, well, what used to be Buckets, I, I don't remember what they, they renamed it now.
Trinidad's.
Trinidad.
Yeah, but we're gonna, of course, approach them again, 'cause we had, uh, entertainment on the, uh, outdoor patio, which really was fun. And then lastly, everything came together at Bricks, and we asked all the participating bands to come for a little bit, like, you know, kind of a jam. Um, we had a house band there, but that way everybody would kinda come together at the last. Um, it's very, uh, doable to be able to literally walk from, you know, venue to venue. It brings people through commercial and, um, you know, so they're getting the whole experience of, you know, whether it's curlies or, but to also see all the shops, the antiques, Ike's music, of course, if I'm gonna be around, I'll probably be running around like a kid with my head cut off, but, um, so, um, if people don't wanna to go to the entire thing, they can buy, um, uh, you know, a different, you know, fee at the door, which is gonna be, uh, six dollars and fifty cents per venue. And again, there's no charge to Moose's, for instance, or Bricks, so that they get the back end of it. Um, our funding that we need is for the marketing budget, advertising, we need to pay the bands, uh, we need to put, uh, some of the acts up uh, in hotels, possibly provide some transportation or get rides from the airport if need be. Um, so that's, um, you know, what we have submitted for.
Did the city help you guys at all, did the city help you guys this year?
Yes, yeah, they matched, um, last year generously, uh, ten thousand, no, seventy-five hundred?
It was, it was ten thousand for the both, the music and lyrics and the poetry.
For this year, though? Is that for this year?
No, we have not heard the issue.
Uh, and I also wanna mention that we are, we, we had really two events, um, with two separate dates. The poetry led off, and they wanna do kind of their own thing, we're just gonna focus, um, um, you know, like my, this is more with music, so.
Well, I, I commend you for your.
What was your turnout on, on this event last year?
Um. It was interesting, it started at the Moose's where we got underway, we had about twenty, twenty-five people there, and it just kept growing, by the time we got to your place, the place was packed, it was full.
And I have to say, I had the posters at the hotel, people from the hotels.
And the other thing is that we wanna make sure we're, we're stipulating in this is, the music we're bringing in, like Ike was saying, is come out of the area. We have great bands here, but you can see those anywhere, so we're trying to bring new and fresh music in the event. And I, and I think that's a good idea, too, 'cause I think, like, we try and get different bands in, in our place, but then the locals wanna hear the bands local. So I think, you know, new music coming to town is always a good thing, I think. And I, and you guys did a really good job last year, I mean, we were busy, so, and, and like Nancy and all, I think you can come and get visitor each time you visit.
One of the things I could see is, you say you wanna bring new bands in, but the one thing that draws the biggest crowds are the bands that Joey gets that are locally. Would you consider that, because it's gonna draw more in?
I would agree with that, we could possibly bring one in, but I think what we're trying to do still is introduce new music to town, because again, you can see those bands just about every weekend.
Well, and, and if I could add, for instance, um, one of the acts, uh, come over from Taos, and so he kinda brought a fan base, you know, you know, he probably had, you know, a dozen people total. You know, between family and some people that also just wanted to, you know, come over and experience Trinidad and then, you know, catch him and then some other people as well. And there's, you know, it's in the contract that even if the bands play earlier in the day, they still need to come to the last venue to kind of recap, and also so that there's marketing networking, people are talking up Trinidad and what we're doing here, and, um, you know, it's really kind of different from the, you know, the Blues Fest, it's not on that level. We're, you know, we're not wanting to compete with that, we just want there to be, you know, some additional things going on, you know, like through the summer. So for instance, we're targeting, uh, uh, July twenty-ninth, and that way, you know, there's, there's stuff going on all the way through the summer. What's that?
Twenty-seventh, I believe.
Oh, twenty-seventh?
It's Saturday.
What, it's twenty-seventh?
No, it's, uh, twenty-ninth, okay.
It's the twenty-seventh of July.
July.
July, yeah, which is on a, yeah, Saturday.
So working with, um, Entertainment District, have you, I'm on the board as one of them, and I think this would be a good event to open up the district, you know, as far as having outside alcohol consumption on the streets, especially on an event like this, I think creating a, a pub crawl, you know, 'cause basically what you're doing is you're going to each venue, playing music, I think it'd be cool to walk from, with your beer outside each venue to the next venue. And then, you know, just kind of drink and drive.
And, and the good thing about Skate Land is, there's naught in it, and once you get into the, the district, then you can have the alcohol. But Skate Land is set up mostly for kids and families, you know.
So we'll need to close streets there, yes, right.
So, yeah, maybe if you're looking to do that, uh, let me know, and then we can set up a meeting, you know, with the Entertainment District and maybe have that open up.
I think it'd be a benefit for you, okay?
And the Entertainment District creates more of a community and a community feel for people, they, it's like easy to walk out of one place and go into another, so we sort of homogenize our downtown, people feel more free to not just stay in one place.
And I think what's happened is actually, yeah, then the district is underutilized.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to open up to more of that to us.
Right.
Okay, this is a good way to, too.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we can partner with them, um, I, I'm only thinking at least last year, you know, in looking at the model, is that, um, we wouldn't have to have necessarily any more porta-potties, uh, security, just to keep the costs down from that side of it, but if we can, please.
However, I, um, you know, you gotta spend a little money to make a little money.
Right.
When you cut it down to individual venues, you're cutting down your base, whereas if you open it up.
Great, this, this is like a, uh, we see, we see the whole big picture of it, so we're thinking it's a benefit to you to opening up the district, you know, is, is sure, is what I, is what I can see.
Yeah, we're not gonna recommend what we think has worked or what we don't, I just.
Yeah, no, no, and if it's, and, and for me, I feel like the collaboration of a lot of, of a lot of entities together, I think it, it brings a good thing to downtown.
What we did last year, and we had a few, a couple of them out there, and what helped with the opening of the street was having, what do they call it in the street, performers, was it?
Uh, busking?
Bus, busking, and you have people that are out there while you're walking around as well, in between the matches, to keep the thing looking down as well. Well, I think, like, I mean, I don't know, um, I'm sure there's no organization and stuff, but I think creating a stage, you know, instead of even doing the last show, you know, I know we did it last year inside first, but, you know, doing an outside stage, you know, a big, big party, you know, 'cause it was like really a jam session at the end, and it was, it was pretty awesome to watch, but I think, you know, if you did it outside, I think it even would be better.
Sure, in the Blues Fest, pre-Fest fashion, like right in downtown at the bank building, where they, you know, just, I, I agree, I think that'd be awesome.
I, I have a question, uh, Mayor Rico and Mr. Salda, is it possible within, uh, a grant proposal like this to ask for funding to help with entertainment district costs like porta-potty, security, things like that?
Well, and also like the stage, which I think is a very cool idea, but I didn't bunch it that in, you know, for instance.
Well, yeah, I, I like the idea of what you're doing, um, I just think you're under, uh, underperforming on what could be a, a really great event because of the fear of costs. So is there a way that although porta-potties aren't necessarily advertising, but it is convenient for a tourist?
Well, only if it turns to information center or some of the apps that allow them to have lots of marketing materials.
That's right.
Being real creative there.
Yeah.
Some toilet paper, is that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, free print, free print.
Right, right, we could do advertising paper.
Nope, I, I think it's wonderful, I mean, we can make this a lot bigger, but I would, I just didn't know if, you know, some of this would be approved based on the cost, so.
Yeah.
Well, we get a lot of requests basically for advertising, but along with the advertising is the backbone of the event itself. And music draws people, and so in order to create a bigger base, um, let's ask for more stuff.
I'm all for it, great.
There, there might be some other buckets out there that we can look into.
Okay.
Tourism is basically your advertising and marketing bucket, there might be others we can explore, so we can meet and discuss that. Um, and then we'll let you know when the next Entertainment District meeting is, we might have to create another meeting so that we can discuss this, yeah, and then we'll.
So that we'll, what, put an addendum in, in addition to this thing?
Well, put a, but, put a proposed budget together, that would really be helpful. We don't have any financials from you.
Okay.
Granted, it's only, this is your second year, but put something together that you're proposing or projecting, or what you'd like to do.
Sure.
There was something that council is doing with the marijuana money, is that, uh, this year, we have decided to try to fund some projects that are out there, uh, as startups. And what we will do is fund like a percentage each year for up to three years, after three years, it goes away, so you become, we expect these, um, projects to become self-sustaining. so you become, we expect these, um, projects to become self-sustaining after the three years. So, that could be a possibility.
And, and would it, would it be unethical to consider other, uh, advertising as far as people that would wanna be sponsors for the event?
Yeah, you really need to do that. A, a, actually, the Tourism Board is only supposed to sponsor except for new, new events. Um, and there's a real line item for new events, um, is, uh, you know, the only capital we're actually supposed to spend unless it's an information center. Everything else is for marketing and advertising dollars. And so, you know, we, we sort of work around that a little bit where we need to, to make sure that we get, we follow the law, but, you know, things like, you know, it's, it's really not unheard of that there was some area of porta-potties and a whole information center above the city of Trinidad around that. I mean, it's, you know, uh, so we, we, and the, that was put in place because it safeguards everybody, so, um, we, we are connected, we are community and, and like Marty said, you know, there may be other pools that we can come from too, and I'm sure the, the mayor can jump in there with what, the things he just said too, but, you know, we, we, we know we need events in Trinidad and we need to work towards signature events. And the Artokade was started through the Tourism Board with, uh, uh, signature money for three years. They got, I think, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, three thousand dollars a month for three years to start going. And that, now they're on their own, so, um, you know, that's.
Well, we would like, the Tourism Board would like to see is a, is a full summer of a lot of events happening in the downtown area. That's, that's kinda what, so the goal that we really are working towards is, is, and we see it, we see it coming now.
And, and we only have so much money too, so we need to work together as a community to have some of these great things happen because we, we only have so much money, you know, but we wanna to, we want all these events to happen, so we have to, you know, chalk it out and work it out with each other so that we can have.
One of the things that might do will probably alleviate some of the porta-potties because we have that new facility, uh, coming online on commercial. So, the only thing I think of is maybe getting a couple porta-potties maybe up on this end of the street and then like the bathroom or the meeting party as well, so maybe alleviate the cost. You might even talk to, I'm not sure, is Tim still doing the porta-potties?
Yes, uh-huh.
He may be willing to donate a couple for the weekend, for, just to get started.
Yeah, Tim, Tim Peters? And I see him often, I would have to ask him on Sunday you're away.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Just get some questions. Where are you marketing? 'Cause I can't find you online anywhere, in particular Facebook. Where can I find out about it now? Other than that you just told me.
We just told you.
Okay.
We're actually waiting for funding, waiting for, to see if we can pull this thing on.
Okay, so plenty of money.
So, do I all get in touch with you and let you know on meetings and stuff and?
Well, you may wanna go tomorrow morning to the, uh, Network Council.
Which is moved?
And it's moved, it's moved into the National Bank Building upstairs, so.
What time?
At the eight o'clock in the morning.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. If you wanna go there, please.
Okay, and if you guys can pass that around. And this from the end, this is last year, yeah. And, and by the way, we did radio, television, newspapers, the whole gamut, you know, last year as well.
No, we couldn't.
We did that one.
Playing on the issue.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, okay, Kirk and Julie, Kirk and Julie. So.
Sure. Um, how about, how many years come out?
Um, the last year we did.
Trendy Fest, we're talking about, uh, this'll be Trinidad Terror, that's what we're talking about.
So we, we would be relaunching an old project that we did for four years, but ended in twenty fifteen. Fifteen, fifteen. So, um, anyway, we've been encouraged to bring it back in some capacity.
And also talking with a lot of people in town that it'd be nice to have something further on in the year as opposed to right up front and July always what the else is, so we talked about October and what better than October than do a Halloween Film Festival called Trinidad Terror and do it that way. Part of that was sparked by Mr. Tom here because two years of our festival in the past, we had Shellings at his funeral home and also had one year Don Shanks, who was playing Mike Myers in the Halloween movie, spoke there. The following year, we had a lady who was the executive producer of all the nightmare and all sorts of movies and she spoke there and gave a quick speech for that. So, it seemed like a great location to do something like that, so for our festival, it makes sense.
They also had something at the back of a house, uh, one Halloween that I went there and, and, um, they talked about a murder that had happened and I don't know if it was a, a made-up thing or if it had actually happened. I have never laughed so hard in my whole life as just being in there in that, in that, and you're just visualizing.
Who did it? Who did that?
I can't remember, but it was.
Was it Hardy Corison?
Um, I can't remember who did it, but there was probably fifty or sixty people in there and you would go from room to room and, I mean, it was, it was, it was, it was really brutal.
I think Ed was there when, when you're in there and that was hilarious.
But it was, it was about a murder that had happened in there and, and there was some older people in there and they were trying to get out of the front door and it was just, it was, the whole thing was just so hilarious and it was, I think they could've continued on with that and made it something really cool, but.
But one of the things we're talking about doing is trying to keep it again in the main area of downtown. I mean, I know the theater is out there and we talked about putting the films out there. I think what we're going to do is have our closing day, have one film, be, we're talking about bringing guest speakers in, maybe the guest speaker who comes, his film will play out there on the final day, but everything else we're gonna try to keep in town, kinda like we did with UJW a couple of years back where we had it all in the background, just keep it centrally located so people don't have to truck all the way up there and truck all the way back.
And we want it in one location, just one film after another. We had tried different venues and it's a lot of moving carts then and hard to, you know, you know, be in two and three places at the same time. Or people complained of, uh, um, not being able to see that film because it was running against something else they wanted to see, so, you know, we're gonna streamline it and we also wanted to do, um, like you, we, we talked about the, um, a walk.
Yeah, so the opening night, what we're probably gonna do is have our first guest speaker speak and we're looking at, right now we're reaching out to, I don't know if you know who Tony Todd is. He's a gentleman who played Candyman, you know, the Candyman movies and also in Final Destination. The other gentleman we're looking at, trying to get ahold of management, is Lance Henderson, who was Bishop in Aliens at Inc. And he would do the opening, we show his movie, but in, in, after that is done, we do a zombie crawl. So, from one end of the street to the other, we have people dress up as zombies and maybe even add the bricks as a final thing and do an award for the best costume and best touch as well.
And it is, we are leaning towards Halloween night, so we, we know the kids come out during the day, but I've seen plenty of adults dress up as well and I know people like to dress up in costumes here. So, you know, anybody can participate and, uh, then it would be, you know, that, you know, maybe evening, luckily by then we, we're talking on, well, October third.
Third thirty-first.
But, but they can take care of their kids, you know, early on and then we, you know, have that a little bit later. But, um, uh, you know, if there's people on Main Street, and we've talked about having, you know, maybe different merchants that want, just they have a reason to go in there.
Oh, trivia, yeah, trivia.
Trivia, um.
Kinda like a poker run from one place to another.
Right.
As well.
You know, I, I haven't figured out something, just, uh, just came across my mind is, you know, a lot of these events that we have, a lot, some of them are, are, many of them are family-oriented, but a lot of them are geared toward adults. You know, the big things in today's younger generation are the Star Wars, the, that type of thing. I think if we could find somebody to put some kind of event on for the younger generation, you know, the high school students where they can wear the Star Wars masks and all this other crazy type. I think that would be something, 'cause the, the students are always saying, what's in, what is there going in Trinidad for us to do? So, put that back in my.
Well, uh, we've been involved with Skate Land's, um, cor, you know, they do a haunted house and they do a really good job and a lot of the kids go through there, so, you know, we could incorporate that. And they do it like for the whole week, so, you know, even if it wasn't Halloween night or whatever, but.
If you, if you have events, which you need to go, it is the creepiest haunted house I've ever met.
At Skate Land?
Yes. So, yeah, it's a creepy, creepy.
Really?
Yeah, there's a girl that dresses up in white and she's standing on a bench and you don't see the bench because the trass pills will load it. She looks like she's just hanging there. And it's just creepy.
Does, does anybody do a TeraFest? Is that, is that something somewhere that's?
Horror Fest?
A TeraFest or Horror Fest or?
Oh, it does.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Have they done other, oh, across the nation, yes.
The horror is, is a genre that, and that's why we made the horror films as a test, um, uh, market to see what we could do, but there's, it's a built-in, um, audience. People, you either love or hate horror films, so, but there's a lot, there's a lot more people that like it than not, so.
You make it through Diggers all the time.
It's very specific, but, you know, in Halloween, you know, Halloween, if you want something in the fall, then we just kinda went that direction with it, so.
And there's a ton of new horrors on top of the town. You, you don't need a name to do a horror film. People will go see horror film and people will go see bad horror film. I had a friend of ours that had a film in our festival and he did it with the Hell Spirit camp years ago. It got the worst review it's ever got in Fanboy Magazine. He sold more movies because of that review, so. It's just a built-in.
I'm only out for Halloween to get the candy. I have no. And that's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm not a horror person, but I think it creates money, you know, I think it creates tourists.
And it's a good time of the year when nothing's going on.
Yeah, there's nothing going on, yeah. That's, that's what I.
One of the things.
Different.
One of the other things that we do that we advertise as well is, we've done it every year with Trendy Fest, is we have distributors, fully distributors available, that we know. And every year we've gotten at least one film that's shown, a distribution deal. So it gets to be played in theaters, good video, and we have about four or five different contacts now that we can get more people hopefully looking at these films and get them deals and it helps promote us and the city as well in knowing that. If you come here, you might get a deal.
Well, and, and in the past, we primarily self-funded this, well, that was one reason we no longer do it 'cause it's just set to a point where we couldn't do that anymore. As it grew, uh, later, we started to see a little more money come in, you know, from, uh, the state, the Colorado Film Commission, he came down and, um, made the city, if you will, match it and, you know, he kinda forced their hand, so, you know, that helped us a lot. And the last year was very, you know, on a small level. Um, I just think the timing's better now, you know, there's definitely more.
Do you think there's any chance, it was at Zuckerberg or what was that guy's name?
Yeah.
Zuckerberg.
Thomas Zuckerberg.
Is there any chance that they would wanna jump in?
I'm sure we could reach out to him, um, again, so.
Last time they matched whatever you did.
Yeah, so, you know, they kinda paved the way to have that happen, so, yeah.
And to help, well, one of the things I'm mentioning also about the fully distributed side of it, one of the things to help promote things throughout the year, once this thing is done, we're opening up a site that is going to allow people to submit films there that we will review. If they're worthy of it, we give them critique and then move it on from there to the studios throughout the year. So people will be seeing advertising promotion for this event, not just three weeks before the event, but hopefully through the whole.
As an option, uh, Si and I were talking about this the other day. Have you ever thought about a kid or Kindy Fest where kids.
Oh, yeah, Kindy Fest would be.
That's kinda cool.
Well, yeah, we thought.
Um, open it up to kids, middle school, maybe even elementary, I don't know. Everybody's got a cell phone, everybody can do a movie. Um, have you thought about anything like that?
Actually, we talked about doing that ahead of time with the school.
We have to start like with a, like a twenty-fourty-eight hour of non-restaurant, what you do is you give them a product and they send it.
Yeah.
Like, how the hell are you doing? Or something like that. You give them something and then they have two minutes to make, uh, two minutes they have to make a film and they send it back to us and they're a bit surprised with it.
Okay. I think that would be.
Yeah, no, I think it's a pretty old.
It's participation for families and you have how many schools in the county.
Nancy about that, no, but I thought that was a great idea, too.
What, what about, um, the newest things that, that I see happening in the bigger cities is doing, uh, murder mystery dinner. So you do, you've kinda figured out the murder during dinner, you know.
We've been to a couple.
Have you? So, that was pretty cool.
That's what I thought maybe you were.
What you were, what you were.
Maybe without the dinner, but, uh.
Yeah, I've, I've seen those, you know, in the past where, they looked like cool, I've had some of them, but I definitely, I think it'd be.
We've been to, I think, two in there, they're, they're fun.
We did one last year, was it at Disney Tree?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they did, right.
No, you guys did a really good job on, on your movie. I, I mean, we had a really good time and, and we packed the house and it was packed 'cause of your, your show, so. You did a great job and it's kinda cool seeing, you know, I remember people, you get, had that, what, the guy that's the scary guy, is in the movie, I don't remember what his name is, but you had him around town like sightings, I think that was pretty cool.
Scary guy in the movie was.
Was you, I mean, what's, what's his name?
Black Lung.
Black Lung. So it's kinda cool seeing him around town. I think it kinda hyped up the town, like there's a movie filming.
Oh, the sightings.
Yes, yeah.
The sighting thing was twelve.
Disney Tree, yeah, or a Skate Land, you know, something like that. And we can honestly, 'cause we're talking about maybe on the last night, because we've had so many people saying, I didn't see the movie Diggers, can you show it again? Maybe doing that Sunday after the festival, show it again. So we can use him as promotion again for this thing throughout the city, put him over, you know, spending the night at the hotel in Moose'sburg here and only over here, yeah.
Even, even kinda like incorporate the Miners Museum because they have that basement with the, uh, that car down there, that would be something kind of exciting in a, in a horror aspect.
It's only funny when we talked about it not with you. I didn't look at, I don't like it, but it, I think it's funny for our town.
If I'd have ran into that guy in the city, I'd be pretty scared.
And thanks for all your years of doing the Trendy Fest. You know, I thought it was way out of the box and just fantastic for Trinidad when you did the Trendy Fest, I really did. We can only hope that we can resurrect it and do something, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Uh, Trinidad Historic Home Tours, Coach Agnello, which will be our last presentation.
What's the name of you that's gonna be there?
Which was Trinidad.
Yeah, how was the Chamber Home Tour? Hi, hi, I don't need, no, I don't need to sit on this, you can always hear me. Um, hi. I'm Karen Jordan, I'm an ambassador with the Chamber of Commerce. And the ambassadors is kinda boots on the ground for the board. We're sort of the ladies auxiliary and friends of. So, our role is to be ambassador of Trinidad and present Trinidad and we want to be able to bring an event to Trinidad where we bring more people to Trinidad that actually emphasizes our commerce, not just about sell, having a, a cookie sale. So our event is a Trinidad historic home store. We'd like to have at least fifteen historic homes in the community. We've already had a couple of people that expressed interest. Tom said that he would have the nursing home. There's a new bed and breakfast at, in the Dr. Lumber, which she says might be one of the oldest homes in Trinidad. And the, um, the bed breakfast on the corner of Los Ananas, there's another home on Main Street. So, we're trying to have about fifteen homes. It will be the weekend of July, excuse me, August tenth and eleventh, um, later in the summer, so that'll give the homes an opportunity to have their gardens flourishing as well. We'll, we'll have a reception afterwards on Saturday at the History Museum 'cause of course that's our best historical building in town, right? And Joe Tarbino has offered to be a guest speaker that evening at the History Museum. So our overall costs for the event itself are minimal because hopefully our plan is to have area businesses sponsor the homes. So a carpet cleaning company or a painter or a real estate agent will have each one of these businesses be a sponsor for the home and they'll be a host so that they get an opportunity to showcase. They get their business cards out and they're gonna help the homeowner, um, present the home. So this gives us an opportunity to have a variety of different commerce businesses in our community showcase their business as well as the home itself. So, it's not just about Trinidad now. Now it's really important that we bring in people from other communities because we drive down Colorado all the time. We see these beautiful homes. We need to have people from other communities to come and see the architecture and the value that we have in our community that was supposed to be the capital of Colorado at one point in time until they found Bold else with. So, our advertising proposal is to bring other people in from other communities. Our biggest marketing is gonna be a insert in the Wherever Now World Journal. And at first we were thinking of something this size and they said, you know what, let's do it that, it's almost a half-size of the newspaper. It's the same size that they do for their summer insert. And that insert would go out to all thirty-three hundred of their subscriptions as well as they snail mail their paper to people in Oklahoma and Texas. And so this insert would have both, um, it would be sort of a brochure. It would have all of the homes listed as well as a little brosh, a little blurb and pictures about each home. As well as the sponsor for each home um and hopefully other advertising as well. Information about the reception the reception will just be open to people who attend the event ticket holders for the event. And we wanna keep our ticket in the fifteen dollar range we don't want this to be cost prohibitive. We want to be people to come and if we put it more than fifteen twenty dollars people aren't gonna gonna do that.
So is this is this only homes any other architecture like you know we have a lot of great architectures it it's just a home it's just homes?
I think right now we want it to be homes because we want people to be able to walk through um it'd be nice to have a Fox Theater that's an option. Um I don't know if they're gonna be at that stage where they can have.
Right.
Tour all day long so we hadn't really thought of other buildings I think right now it's most about the.
Senegal. Okay.
But maybe someone did mention that the uh Senegal and the Masonic Temple. Um so it might that's a good question we might expand it cause we do have Tom Murphy and he's a business obviously. Um and so it might be um historical buildings as well.
So so they would get a ticket and it would be a two day affair?
It'd be a two day affair we thought that because if if well we want them to come right why come and leave?
Right.
Come and stay right um so then they can use it for two days especially someone's gonna think about if you're spending a half hour at each house and I've got fifteen houses. Yeah we need to spread it out over two days and if we're spending the amount of advertising that I'm asking I need to make it worth people's time.
Yeah right. Right.
So yes that's why it's a two day land and and again now now you spend the night and now you're going out to more restaurants and. And going to events in the evening for entertainment um and see see more Trinidad that way.
They had this one time in Trinidad they where they had Victorian homes where you could go on tour.
Somebody mentioned that to me as a matter of fact someone said oh they ask me to do this every year and I said who's they?
Yeah.
And I've only been there nine years.
And there was there was a big following for that because there's a lot of people would wait in the community for it. I was lucky cause I worked for UPS for thirty-five years and I think I've been in every Victorian home that's in Trinidad and I've heard a lot of stories about the homes but. I I think it's a a uh an awesome project.
So this is good good to bring it back then okay so don't wanna reinvent the wheel if you have information to offer to us we would love to have that.
Yes. No. But there's there's a lot of homes with a lot of history and uh I don't think there's a lot of original owners in the homes that were. In all the years that I did there was the original owner.
Yeah.
I mean there's homes with elevators there's homes with that were churches at one time and there's one house that there's still a uh a baptismal tub in the basement.
Well you'll have to show it to me.
I mean there there's there's a lot of history in a lot of these homes.
I just on Halloween I walked down a commercial.
There's one house with the bowling alley that was in it you know.
You'll have to tell me on the sales. I just went down uh Colorado.
There's a lot of history. Yeah.
On Halloween and I just cause the kids are asking for candy so I went and said can I have your house for torture and everybody really showed a lot of interest they didn't have any dates. We were just tossing around but I was surprised how many people just walking down the street said it sounded like a great idea so maybe I'll have one.
You did you did have a big following it really did so I think.
So you have you have another question for me?
Uh well I was gonna ask you what's your criteria for does it mean a home home or it's specific?
You know what that's a really good question that we probably need to establish the parameters of what terms do we have is it a certain date? And that's a really good idea that we probably need to establish thank you.
What was the particular history the more unique types of history?
We were thinking of the Colorado area Colorado Avenue because that that neighborhood seems to be um well over a hundred years old. Some of the homes on First Street seem to be in that hun- so I think we're looking at probably that hundred year mark. Um that's a good idea for me to to mention your criteria.
One of the homes that if you can get into is the Petromolodyary uh the original family was the Deal family and uh. One they were both spinster sisters and there's murals that she painted on the walls they're still on the walls they.
Well I'll have to get with you later.
It's a mural of a forest.
Get this information because it's really good I knew that there was I've I've reached out to the Trinidad Historical. There's two different organizations um with similar names Trinidad Historical Association and the Preservation Society so I've reached out to both of them. And again Joe Terabino and the History Museum will be able to offer some input as well.
How do you how do they do you take them by trolley do they drive them in cars?
Well we thought about that we we had asked Marty about the trolley but now we're thinking that if A we want this to be more about Trinidad. I wanna bring in three hundred people I'm hoping that the advertising that we're targeting was three thousand um for the World Journal and six thousand for Pulp. I'm hoping we're gonna get three hundred people coming so I don't think it's feasible to just rely on the trolley it'd be really nice if that's an option. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna have in the center of the the handout we'll give it out right in the center.
So it's self-guided.
So it's self-guided and at that point we're thinking if thirty minutes at a house the trolley's not gonna sit around and wait to make it this.
Right 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 that's what I'm sure and so then we get a wristband out of that?
Um they'll have a ticket and the ticket will get punched or xed out so we'll we'll print a ticket and each address will be on the ticket. Um and I hadn't thought about if we're doing it today maybe people might wanna read if you have a ticket you have a ticket I guess you can go visit the house a second time if you like. But if you're really 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 into bowling alleys or bathtubs you might be spending an hour at that home or. You might not be interested in that particular home so I I think that it's really gonna be self-guided as opposed to this home is open at nine to ten this home's open from ten to eleven. Think we need to make it much more about them being able to be self-paced and and they'll have their their brochure which is gonna be nice and big and have all the homes in it. And that center page will have the list of each home and the addresses and then the maps and we might do one big map and we might do two maps depending upon.
The homeowners since they're they're gonna be taken out of their house for a day or two basically even though they're gonna be there are they compensated in any way?
Nope I don't I think that this is the this is kind of a goodwill gesture to our community um I think a lot of people are really proud of these cool homes. The other thing is we're gonna be partnering with businesses not just as sponsorships but businesses such as the nurseries. And the um artists and the antique dealers and the photographers to come help and stage so maybe Mrs. Smith says you know I've got this really cool home but I didn't need it. So I can say here let me put you in touch with the antique dealer and they might have a really cool piece of of furniture there and then of course that antique dealer gets to say this is available for sale.
Right.
And over the mantle here's this picture of Fisher's Peak that someone painted and oh yes it's available for sale. So again it's more and more opportunities for commerce and businesses to all get to showcase to people all over the the area um.
You've put a lot of thought into this.
I hope so um and I've been really lucky that I've I've reached out and I found some really good um places for marketing. I'm excited about that brochure and of course we'll help sell advertising sponsors to offset that. The um I really wanted a drone tour but that was kind of out of our budget but maybe next time. The other thing that I think is really neat is I found the Gazette when I called them for an ad he said well you know what I got a better idea for you let's go digital. And they have a campaign where on their out there Colorado website they do they have an algorithm that finds people that already go to events like this. And they'll target this which is completely above my pay grade I'm a Facebook junkie but other there's there's widget makers and widget sellers and I'm not a widget seller I'm a widget maker widget doer. And so I've been really fortunate that I've found people like Mary Jo and the Gazette um and Pulp who said you know we've got lots of ways that we can target lots of other people. Other than me just walking down Main Street and putting up my flyer and Pulp if I print my flyer I go out and wait for this to print that had their trusty little half price sale. And I print my flyer for thirty-five dollars for every thousand they will just stick that flyer right in their magazine and their magazine is produced um twelve once a month. And so I would do it twice and their magazine is libraries and and all over um I think it's five counties. Um and it's a demographic that I think is what we're looking for that it's kind of an art and culture kind of demographic that I think would really be drawn to it. So you can see there's there's all the the regular radio advertising and and other things but those are the three that are really a little different than why we're asking for funding for this. Because the event itself isn't gonna be real expensive but it's not gonna be real exciting if I only have fifty people from Trinidad come visit.
Right.
The the real estate agent is not interested in hanging out there for two days if I only have fifty people I need to draw in lots of people from outside of our community. And so that's what we think for. Any more questions?
Nope.
And a real quick side note in case any of you don't know um and I have cards um I do a radio broadcast every Tuesday on KOTN. And all of these events that's why I'm asking for dates for people that know and I publish publish a list on the Voice of Trinidad Facebook page. Of all of the events and then I also share them with Marty and she puts them on but then there's always this twelve page list that you can print off and put on your refrigerator and it's public Voice of Trinidad on Facebook.
Very good thank you so much Karen.
Thank you.
Madame Jorgnella need to make a comment at this point. You know I you know the tourism days on just recently. And what I'm seeing is the imagination and the energy that is in this community at this time is beyond even what I imagined. And I really believe that in the you know it's almost like Trinidad is at the point of becoming a destination for events. On almost like a weekly basis that's what I'm seeing. So what I'm thinking about is I'm going to probably bring a work session together with the tourism and city council. And what I'd like for you to do Si is to bring some of these events that are in just very short because there are so many because it could take a lot of time as we want.
Right.
To let council know what energy that we have within all these people and the imagination that is going that is 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 perpetuating in Trinidad right now. And I really think that from that I think we need to probably start looking at maybe a different way of how we fund these projects. If they're going to all succeed or even the majority of them succeed. So is that a role that developed an economy of itself?
Right.
My my question is to you is how many of these people today have visited city council and asked you know? And and by me asking you that question is all of them all of them have the possibility of bringing Trinidad to a whole new level. Which I think the city and the tourism board is basically advertising. The city has to be the other link to funding to get the get it off the ground and my question has been to Si is. How much money has the city given this event and you know and and a lot of these questions no money. So you have you have a you have a group that has a budget of twenty thousand dollars. They're asking us for fifteen they have five they've received nothing from the city. So how can we fund them and them get off the ground? Because we don't have a lot of money to give and here you have uh you have an event falling on its face because it can't go any farther. You know that's that's what I see you know I see that I see that as as us telling an event that we can't fund them. Their whole amount and then they they fold right there and that's the vision of bringing so much to Trinidad is we're closing the door on them.
Well I think what you're saying what Phil's saying is kind of the same is he's realizing what we have to realize and go through and. And pick those events out to ask us to sit at the table with city council and see what they can do and I really am so glad you're a liaison and and see that over the years. It's been very difficult and the energy here is pretty high and you know I sit on the C- a Colorado Tourism Office Leadership Board this year. And they are telling us over and over again you cannot increase tourism in your city without supporting events. You need to take your event line item and put it up they said like I know it's Vale but they said that there was like two thousand events in Vale but forty-seven signature events. And if all Vale had was ski slopes it wouldn't be why people have gone on to make downhill skiing and the stuff that we're doing downhill biking I mean and other. And events all the time so that people can count on coming to cheer a community on a weekend and have something to do. And we see all this and it's our excitement for it but we do only have so much money.
And and one of the one of the things I've said is I would like to see a full summer. Our summer full you know of events going on I mean Triggers is a huge thing. The Blues closes the Blues doesn't close it out but Arcade closes it out for the summer. And then you go right into the to the fall with the Trinidad roundup.
Well you know the other thing is I I think that from your side from the tourism side I think the time almost has come to maybe you need to rethink your budget.
Yep and and we've talked about that.
With 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 marketing and action funding.
And and see what I.
And then the city would like to say well like through this work session um we'll determine what maybe we can do from our side because it's like there's a limited.
Right.
We need more collaboration between both.
So that's all I think that's why I wanna bring together a a work session between you and city council.
One of the things Phil is we we were spending fourteen to twenty thousand dollars on advertising in magazines that didn't even represent Trinidad. I would like to take that money and we didn't advertise with them it was USA Today. I would rather take that money for events that are happening in Trinidad than to take them in magazines that possibly aren't being seen.
Now this this money that you're considering today is you know the dollar amount is that for the entire year or?
Yes.
Yes this we have seventy thousand dollars for the entire year.
Phil I mean mayor um I will say this too and I'm glad you bringing are bringing up this subject. While we graded these uh application uh applications yesterday last night without much personal input. I will say today that I upgraded some of my scoring left others where they were. Because the personal contact of these applicants don't come through on the paper. But you want to help them but again I'm thinking dollars of our seventy thousand fifty of it is existing and twenty of it is new. So if we have two or three new projects and we've only got twenty thousand but they're all wanting ten or fifteen thousand. Let's just take for instance the music festival that Ike was talking about. He's downsizing his his image of this event because he's concerned about porta pikes and the expense or security well that's a minute point. So um I think we have the capability at the end of each quarter as I understand it to move some of our funding around but.
These are our feet.
We need a clear picture of that.
These are our feet if we have money below us these are our feet that's going out there and talking to Trinidad we could put ads in in magazines and it doesn't do as much as by 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 having literally.
Right.
Three hundred people with who's all behind these people out there walking and doing things for Trinidad and talking about Trinidad and putting the good word and the good feeling out there. And uh and I and I think that even where this is concerned I I think we can't even get through this meeting today with making selections on money we still need a pause to come back together again if it's too big.
Here's here's the one thing we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in reserve money for the year. My suggestion was was I want to bring the reserve lowered and to bring more of that money out into promoting these events in Trinidad. We have a number of ways we have by lowering the the reserve to a hundred thousand we we will then have twenty-six thousand more added to that. The less amount of money that we advertise in magazines that we feel haven't represented Trinidad enough that money can be. We do have the money we do have the money but we we as a board have to sit down and figure out where are we getting our best bang for the buck for the buck. This is the first time in a long time that this board has been fully seated and I do think that we have the people on this board now that are capable of reaching that. You know I don't know if the what you think about that but but those are my feelings.
Well the last of you and I've myself sat through what three or four meetings and uh I see and listen to the input of each one of you members. Dylan that I was at one where Camille was here but I'm 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 excited with the amount of effort that you guys are putting forth the suggestions that you guys have. And that's why I say I think that this works. And that's why I say I think that this work session needs to happen. Because you need, city council, we see so many other things.
Right.
But we don't see all the various projects that are, you know, just on there on this list.
Yeah.
And I think they need to know as a whole group, we need to know as a whole group as to what the possibilities are in this community.
Right. And, you know, and just to dismiss any people who have been on this board or not, being that we're on film, and I've been on and off this board a lot over the last eighteen years, seventeen, eighteen years, is that this board, because we've not been always been about appearing before sitting council, they work their ass off to get that trolley, they work their ass off to put that book together. Every year they've really, there's been some huge projects. What Jonathan did last year by signing up us up to eighty thousand dollars worth of ads without us knowing wasn't fair to the board itself, but this board has continuously, there is a lot more energy in this town now that wants to do good things. And yes, we are on the tipping point. The grant program that was written for the city, right after we attained the tax money, we went to different organizations and said, what should we do? And they all told us then, they told us now, you will never grow your tourism in a city if the tourism board doesn't have money to help your local people do events.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting, because I'm going to Lahana tonight, to that so-called thing down there, but then I'll be there tomorrow, but it's gonna be interesting to listen to anybody else that shows up to see what their thoughts are of Trinidad.
Yeah, no, it's envious of that, yeah.
Well, I, I, let me tell you something, I seen it in in Vale when I went. I sat at a restaurant and a guy asked me where I was from. I said, I was from Trinidad, and he was from Georgetown. And he said, my God, we hear so many good things that are happening down in Trinidad. And I mean, this is on I-70 and they're hearing it up there, you know, so that is a good thing.
I heard it this day, one ago, when I talked to some of the legislators up there.
My thing when we went to this, my thing was when we went to this thing in Vale, there was four of us from the tourism board, there was nobody represented from the city. But every other city that was there, they had a city council member, they had a mayor, they had, it was just, to me, it was, it was kind of sad because it it kind of put us in a corner with no representation of our city.
Was that one?
The governor's conference.
The governor's conference. And to hear him speak, it was, you know, it was, it was kind of disheartening for me to see no representation in from Trinidad. I don't know about you, Marty, what you felt or of Si.
The tourism?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but the the context that we make as a tourism board to go to those are just really fabulous, you know. And it was, it was true, I mean, the Trinidad name was out there though.
I just feel like we were the representatives there.
Yes.
And so that was a good thing, I don't, I don't think it's, we can expect our city leaders to be everywhere all the time. So that was our opportunity to be representative of the city.
Ted and Luther did throw a shout out for Trinidad.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that even that day or that night or whatever happened, I think I have conflicting.
Yeah.
But it goes back, it goes back to what you were saying too, mayor, that collaboration between council and tourism is really important. And that collaboration starts when they, when there is a city representative at, especially a governor's conference.
I, I, you know, I don't, I never told the city and I really didn't say much to anybody else, but I won the Jack Snow Award for the state of Colorado at the Governor's Tourism for the Person Most Influencing, Lifetime Achievement Tourism in the State.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I think you didn't know.
Oh, I'm sure. Is there something on?
Well, I didn't approach or do anything much about it, no, close to the picture. And we did put an article in the newspaper.
I know.
It was, it didn't go in the newspaper.
I was like, okay.
It is.
I didn't, I put it in.
I didn't see it.
I just see it.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, we do have one more representative here, so we probably should move along with that.
Oh, yes, let's go.
Okay.
Okay, you're up.
I can have to go. Yeah. Actually, look, we should follow the agenda, so we have some other agenda items, but if we could have Ms. Martinez do your KRDIO presentation real quick. Sorry. That's quite all right. Good morning, board members and Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman. Here's a revised proposal that I wanted to present to you. And you feel like, I didn't put it on the cover page.
No, you're fine.
That's fine. Okay. So Marty and I met yesterday afternoon and we actually worked out the number of the details in order to be able to move forward with the creation of the TV commercials and the digital production. We've also laid out some dates where we need some deadlines in order to be able to move forward through the project. I've also provided, Marty, with the calendars for June, July, and August for new news interviews, of which those are free and at no charge added as added value to the board. And my understanding is that Mayor Riffo will appear for this.
Yeah, it's always.
I haven't told him yet. Well, we haven't told him, so I kind of spilled the beans.
We started the news interview with us, with this.
Okay, so I'll get into more detail about that.
We wanted you to do that in the interview.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so we've kind of moved forward and so this is what I'm here today to to discuss and to to lay out the final plan.
So just to bring council and the board up to speed, you did approve a change in the price of the KRDIO agreement. So she was going to return with the with the new scope as the revised contract. So the the price tag was changing essentially. And so we identified the elements that we wanted to highlight, and so that's why she's come back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so per our last meeting, you asked me to take out some of the elements that I had included. One of those was Telemundo, our Spanish television affiliate, and I've been advertising on the Spanish television station. I maintain KRDIO, krdo.com, and the homepage takeovers and the digital campaign on krdo.com. I'm also maintaining Heroes and Icons, our digital channel, because I can give it to you so affordably and so cheap, would be a crime not to participate with it. So again, we're looking at a high-frequency TV advertising spot campaign on KRDIO News Channel thirteen and Digital TV Channel thirteen point two, Heroes and Icons. And because of the change in budget and then once I sat down and started to structure the campaign, I came to the conclusion that it was best to condense it from a twenty-six-week campaign to a thirteen-week campaign on the TV stations. And that will allow us to have more frequency and to really focus on the tourist season, June through August.
So mostly June through August.
Exactly. And that's the TV campaign itself. So, and that's on the two TV stations. Now, I've, of course, kept the digital campaign on krdo.com intact. And I'm suggesting that we, because of the number of impressions that I proposed and the two approved, that we could extend that over a twenty-six-week period so that you would have consistent presence on digital on krdo.com over a twenty-six-week period.
Let me ask you a question. You've heard all the grant applications that we've had today. My thing is, is can we take, if we give some of these grant applications funding, can we use that in in our airtime, those events that are happening?
So here would be my suggestion. And again, Marty and I talked about this actually, because, you know, it is a complicated process to a degree to create and produce television commercials. So my suggestion is that what we're doing right now is we're embarking on the initial two fifteen-second commercials so that we can get them started by June first.
Right.
Those are going to be more of a generic type of spot promoting, visit trinedadcolorado.com.
Now, are those some of those pictures that we had sent you? That's one of them?
Yes, and some video, and so we're, we're going to be taking a look at those and developing the TV commercials so that it's ready for June first. Now, with the digital campaign, we can actually start that as early as May first and take that twenty-six weeks through October thirty, basically. Okay, and that can be more of a generic campaign to promote, visit trinedadcolorado.com. Or it's going to be a lot easier for us to incorporate some of those events into the digital campaign that will be for the TV campaign.
Okay. That's what I would like to know is that.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So let's go on and then I think I'll answer some of the other questions that might come up. So what we're looking at again with krdo.com, again, I condensed the campaign over the thirteen-week period, starting Monday, June third, and taking it through Sunday or Saturday, August thirty-first, and then Sunday is September first, so we can extend it if we need to by another day or so. So I've increased the number of fifteen-second commercials to five hundred and twenty over the course of those three months or thirteen weeks. My apologies, I thought I had cleaned that up, so that should be a thirteen-week investment for thirteen thousand ten. Okay? It was twelve thousand dollars originally, I bumped, I had the, so what happens is we go along through the process, our rates are determined by supply and demand.
Right.
So the more inventory we have available, the more flexible that we are in terms of the rate. Once inventory starts getting really tight, then we have to take more control of the inventory situation. So things change as we go throughout this timing. So when I went, when I sat down and I built the schedule, then I had to build in a little more money into the schedule in order to meet the goal. So what five hundred and twenty commercials means is that there will be forty fifteen-second commercials running every week for thirteen weeks over the campaign. On KRDIO.
And remind me too, I'm sorry, that is, this, how, what was our original, or your original proposed?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, okay. Twenty-two thousand for the total, over twenty-two thousand. Okay, thanks. Okay, and and as I mentioned, I am strongly suggesting that we still incorporate Heroes and Icons at thirteen point two, which is our digital channel. It's very, very affordable, I can give it to you for five dollars a spot. And build in some additional frequency. And again, Heroes and Icons has the same coverage over Southern Colorado, Colorado students, Buffalo, and Southern Colorado that KRDIO has. So we're talking again about people who are cord cutters, who, you know, may have an Amazon Fire Stick or Netflix, and they're streaming other television, but if they want their local broadcast TV stations like KRDIO or KOAA, ABC, NBC, CBS, Fox, then they have to get their TV over the air digital. And so that's where Heroes and Icons comes in. So if you're one of those TV viewers that gets your local broadcast in that way, you're going to find KRDIO at thirteen point one, and then next door at thirteen point two is Heroes and Icons. And again, it's kind of retro TV, it's Xena, Warrior Princess, Star Trek, New Generation, and all others.
Not much, I don't watch much TV, but.
So I'm looking at a thirteen-week investment to match the KRDIO, and we're looking at three hundred and twenty fifteen-second commercials. That'll be approximately twenty-six fifteen-second commercials over every week for a thirteen-week period. And we're looking at nine hundred and ten dollars for that investment. So it's, it's very minimal.
So we at this point either say yes or no.
So let's, let's, yeah, let's continue. So you had asked me last time to maintain the digital campaign as existed. So again, we're looking at six hundred and fifty thousand impressions over twenty-six weeks on krdo.com. That's twenty-five thousand impressions per week. That investment is thirty-two fifty. And then I've incorporated again, which you asked me to do, the homepage takeovers. And so as I talked to Marty yesterday, here's where we want to use the homepage takeovers is to promote events, promote ticket sales, promote events, promote hotel stays, overnight stays. And this is what we want to do when it comes to homepage takeovers, is promote the events.
Okay, I have a question, Connie. What if we don't do the home or the Heroes and Icons and we take that nine hundred dollars and move it over here to give us more bang for the buck on the digital campaign?
I really don't think you need to do that because twenty-five thousand impressions over a twenty-six-week period, I think is.
Should cover it.
Should cover it, and it's, it's, it's very adequate coverage over twenty-six weeks. Because you're going to be building frequency over the twenty-six weeks as each week goes on.
Okay, I'm not a KRDIO person, I, this is all like foreign language, but in the second paragraph of the digital campaign page, where KRDIO homepage takeover, it's, it's geared more towards specific events, correct?
That would be my recommendation as to how we utilize it because you have the opportunity to have exclusive homepage presence on all digital banner ads on the krdo.com homepage for twenty-four hours. And so just as we utilized it for Trinidadio, the the link from those digital ads went to the Trinidadio Blues Fest ticket page specifically. And so it helped build and sell additional tickets through that campaign.
In in the past, bring up Trinidadio, the Blues Fest, are we double paying since they're paying, I mean, they're requesting so much money, I know last year they requested, I don't know how much money it was, but they're paying for all these ads and then we're paying the ads too, so.
We've, we had, we had never done this with KRDIO.
Oh, we've never been on this.
No, it doesn't be the first time.
This is gonna be the first time, so, so see, my question is, is here's.
Use the, buy these and use as a donation to.
The last page gives us a pretty good breakdown of nineteen thousand dollars as to the twenty-two thousand dollars. And we need to look at our budget as in advertising, as to where we stand in the advertising, is if we bought that in the advertising, that's gonna give us money into the grants.
So as a matter of fact, when Lusti left the, left the meeting this morning, I stepped out to say hello and he told me because of the sex, the success that they had last year with KRDIO, that they were going to condense all of their TV dollars and place it with KRDIO because we treated them so well and gave them so much value.
And that's what Joey is saying.
Yeah.
We're duplicating.
So in your particular campaign, again, really the focus is going to be visittrinedadcolorado.com so that we can drive viewers and dot com users to the website so they can experience KR, I'm sorry, experience Trinidad through the website. And then make decisions at that point, which events they want to attend, you know, hotels, plan a trip, meals, you know, all of that sort of thing. So that's really the focus. We're not going to take portion of your advertising campaign and promote Trinidadio's Blues Fest.
No, but we're saying the opposite. Okay, so let me just ask you this, and I don't have their, the Blues Fest part in front of me. What are they budgeting with KRDIO?
We haven't had those discussions yet, but I can tell you what we did last year.
Okay.
Okay, so last year they placed in, they made an investment of twenty-five hundred dollars. And with that, they got a TV advertising campaign for about a four-week period. They had a couple of homepage takeovers, they gave them a new news interview, and there was a digital campaign along with those homepage takeovers. And so it was all wrapped up into a twenty-five hundred dollar investment.
Here's, here's the thing, Nancy, is you and Joey are not familiar with this as as well as as we are.
Right.
But my thing is, is is by us buying the nineteen thousand dollar thing, that gives us money out of advertising and not from the grant money.
Yes, I agree.
To which we're, to where we can move it.
Move it to the other ones.
You know, right, see, so, so that's what.
So let's say for instance that some of the events, for instance, Santa Fe Trail Days didn't have any presence last year at all, right? Apparently they were not organizing any from the board last year. Maybe that's something that you want to help promote this year. You know, maybe it's music and lyrics, maybe it's some of those other things that you want to help promote, which doesn't have the budget that Trinidadio has and has the the presence. So yes, I am going to be approaching Lusti and Jerry again, and we're going to sit down and we're going to create a campaign in order to promote specifically Trinidadio. But my recommendation is that with your particular digital camp and TV campaigns, that it's branding. It's branding for Trinidad, it's branding for the area, it's branding for the destinations and the attractions and those kinds of things that you want to promote.
My, my.
And then your, your event money that you're going to be awarding to those other entities, I can sit down and discuss with them, if exactly what they want to do to promote their event through the funding that they got through.
Marty, do you have something to add?
Yes, so when she's talking about branding and.
Yes, so when she's talking about branding and leading people towards the website. So that takes us into our website development. We can, that website is ours, we can put anything we want to. If we want to put a headline on there for whatever event is going on at that particular time, that will be our headline. But driving those people to that website is going to give us the advertising that we need for those individual events. Because we can advertise on our own website as much as...
Or, or advertising all the events that we sponsor.
Listed on your website, and then what we're doing through the branding campaign on TV and digital is driving people to the website, providing the visual identity and exposure to them as they're watching television or the news or whatever programming that they see your commercial on, to drive their interest again to not only the city, but to the website. And then we can advertise our event, and we can advertise our hotels, and we can advertise our restaurants, and we can advertise everything in one area on our own website, and we have to drive them there first.
Okay, so can they go from, if they go to visit TrinidadColorado dot com, are there places on the site now that they can click through and book a room, buy a ticket for an event? Are those kinds of things established?
No, but there's possibilities, so we are discussing that.
On the banner, I'm on your guys, I'm on your website right now. So when you're saying the banner ad impression, where would that be at?
Okay, so what you're looking at right now is our mobile site. And so let me be clear that when it comes to the mobile site, the homepage takeovers are desktop only. So the digital ad campaign that incorporates the homepage takeovers are not mobile, they're strictly desktop. So when it comes to the actual digital campaign, there will be, I can divide the desktop impressions or those twenty-five thousand per week, I can place twenty thousand of them on K R D O dot com, and then I can place another five thousand of those impressions on mobile. So it's a combination.
What's, on, on K R D O, is the mobile more impressions than the desktop? Because I know most sites are pretty much more mobile now than desktop.
Well, you know, the other...
I've never gone, I've never...
So the other question I have to you, and I have, I'm sorry, I haven't checked it, because Marty just told me yesterday that it was no longer just February, Trinidad dot org, it was now it's at TrinidadColorado dot com. So I did not have a chance to go, but you know, you want to be sure that if we're going to be placing mobile banner ads on mobile, that your website is mobile optimized.
All right, Marty?
I don't know the answer.
I'm looking right now.
Okay. So the difference is, if we go to your website right now, does it look the same as it does when we go on a desktop? Or is it mobile optimized to the point where you, where a mobile user can, it says, you know, call to connect right now? You know, is there a button that takes us directly to hotels? So those are the things that we need to make sure that you're, if we're going to be utilizing mobile banner ads and sending people through mobile, then your site needs to be mobile optimized. It does not look, it does not, when it's mobile optimized, it does not look like your website at once if we're going to it on a desktop.
It, it looks similar to our website.
Okay.
Because I know what it looks like on the desktop.
So then we need to be sure that whoever you're working with and your webmaster, make sure that your site is also mobile optimized.
We got that new girl.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you go to a mobile optimized site, you can see the difference between what it looks like on the desktop and what it looks like on your cellphone. Because if it's mobile optimized on your cellphone, it's going to have different button options that you can go to. And so one of the things that I would suggest is, is mobile optimizing the site.
It is?
Yeah, it is. The only thing that's different, the only thing that we need to link is like, the restaurants and the hotels, you can't click on those to get to the restaurants and hotels, but it is mobile from going on here, and it looks just, yeah.
That's pretty easy, just plug in the hotel right to your click.
Yeah, so that's what I would suggest, is that you mobile optimize it further to, because that's, you know, that's one of the things that you want, is for people to spend time here, rent a mobile.
And the mobile is gonna be the most used, more than the desktop.
Has the new girl started working on her site? Has that contract been signed off on?
No, it's under the agenda today here.
Okay. Okay, so far so good?
So far so good.
Okay, so in addition to those homepage takeovers of which I'm offering three, I also discounted them from five hundred dollars to four hundred and fifty each. So I gave you a break on math. In addition, for added value at no charge, I'm providing you with at least three K R D O Facebook and Twitter posts to over two hundred and ten thousand of our Facebook followers with a click through to visit TrinidadColorado dot com, or in a vet website page if that's what you want. And I'm also providing three K R D O TV new news interviews. And we provide these to nonprofits at no charge. And since you qualify as a nonprofit, I'm incorporating three of them over the course of the summer. Marty and I were talking yesterday, and she volunteered Maririco to be the interviewee. So basically, Maririco, you would be showing up, we, we would, as I said, I'd give Marty the calendars. And so we have the available dates that she, that she can select based on your, your schedule and your calendar. You would come up to Colorado Springs at eleven AM to our studios. The interview would take place with Mike Lewis, who is our program director for K R D O radio, in the K R D O radio studios. It's videotaped. And then it's a two-minute interview. You, you would suggest that you come up with about three different questions that you would want him to ask you about if we're talking about events, or if we're talking about the website, or Trinidad in general. You can make that determination prior to the interview. And then once you do the interview, it's edited, and then it actually airs in the K R D O TV new news between twelve-thirty and one o'clock. And because we simulcast our news on K R D O radio, the interview will also reach the radio listeners.
By the way, does this have to be done?
So Marty has the calendars for June, July, and August, and she knows right now what dates are available and what dates are open, so...
About time.
Yeah. All right, so yes.
Thanks.
Actually, they did, they're just running with it.
I, I, I suggest, you're the best representation.
And then we can also take that interview, once it's done and once it airs. It takes a couple of days for us to pull it through, and then I can provide it to Marty, and it can be posted on the website.
Okay.
Or throughout your social media sites as well.
Okay, very good. Do we need anything else? Are there motions, or do we think that's...
Okay, so you had, you had given me an, a seventeen thousand dollars the last time, but then as, as I said, when I sat down, looked at the inventory, looked at what else was available and what we needed to do, I had to make some adjustments. So in terms of the commercial production, we are working on the two fifteen second commercials now, which will be graphics and still shots that Marty is providing, so we're going to do those at no charge. If in the future you want us to bring the, the camera crew down and the production department down to film additional footage so that we can create more commercials during the summer, then that's where we're going to have a production fee, and I brought that down from seven fifty to four hundred and eighty.
My thing on that is I would, I would like to advertise city-owned entities, like our Gulf Horse and our Monument Lake. Those, those are the two things that, that I would like to see. I don't know about, maybe there's some suggestions from any of you?
Well, I'll, well, well, let's just think if there's anything else, that's great, just as it is. And I'd just like a little bit more setup if we do that, in the extent of if we do any downtown footage, make sure that there's people going in and out of stores, that there's cars on the, on the park, so that it looks like it's a...
And the trees are green and have leaves, and it's nice and, you know...
Also a nighttime photo, because our trees are always all over that, and they're looking at, it's beautiful.
People comment all the time, I'll come back to a little devil.
So what we might be looking at then is, you know, when the time comes and we make the decision to do that, it might involve an overnight stay for the production crew, and we can work on that, some things like that, so we can build that in as well. Okay, so then we need a motion to approve, deny, or table. So the new investment is eighteen thousand versus seventeen thousand.
I think from the original budget that we had received, that for the extra two thousand, I think we are getting a good product for, for our money. I really do.
Okay, a motion?
Is this coming out of the advertising?
All right.
I make a motion that we accept the revised budgeted proposal from K R D O.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, thank you. So the next step is that I'm going to, based on this, I also actually, and Marty and I talked about whether or not we should, I can...
I gotta go.
Say this.
Yeah, we're trying to...
Okay, all right, well, I have the schedules, I have already built the schedules for both TV stations. I can leave that information with you, and just take a little bit...
We can go for that in the yes.
Okay, do you want me to just leave it with you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you Connie, thank you for your patience.
No, no problem.
Approval of amendments from the March...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving, thank you so much.
So when...
A second?
Second.
Approval of invoices?
So board members will see the tourism postage that has taken place in the last three months. I submitted the three thirty-one sixty-nine on December sixteenth, and then this submission, it goes for all of the months so far in twenty nineteen, so January, February, and March, for a total of seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents.
Is, is this the only billing?
For postage?
Oh, I, well, I'm sorry Marty.
The only invoice?
Okay.
Yes, this is our only invoice, which are for approval.
Somebody want a motion to approve that?
I do that we accept the tourism postage invoice.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you.
Okay, Christie Rogers had to leave, but you do have her paperwork in front of you as proposed. So she, the board requested her to develop a scope of work, which she has done. We discussed capping hours. Have, have you reviewed this document? It was in your board packet that I did send.
I scanned her.
Yeah, okay, okay, so her, so I had asked that hours be capped, so that is in there as well. She also continues to ask for the seventy dollars per hour for development, that hasn't changed, even though the scope of work is a little bit grander than we had originally proposed. And she also included usability testing and web analytics in that, so that, at our request. So the board needs to be clear on the, on that particular note. Nothing will be done to the website unless it is at our direction.
Okay. And we have now paid Studio Six so she can gain access?
They are completely paid.
Okay.
I will make a motion.
Okay.
All right, second.
Tom made the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Joey? Roll call?
Yeah, hi, George.
Mr. Cress?
Yes.
Ms. Lackey?
Yes.
Ms. Salz, Mr. Salazar?
Yes.
Ms. Michaels?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks Nancy.
Yes.
Okay, so we are now on Adventure, oh, yes, Adventure Outdoors Magazine, and that was at your request, Ms. Michaels? Okay, and Lenz, our contract for billboards too?
Yes, we have to go back to that, yeah.
I will say that I am not a fan of billboard advertising dollars. I'd rather use our advertising dollars in more digitalized fashion. I personally believe that in looking at the pictures of the current billboards, I, I, I think we can do better.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement that there's a lot of people over the years that were really upset that one, their contract, so that board's been sitting out there on and off, but I, I, I don't think that those boards, I've never had somebody come in to the city or to the hotel and say, wow, I seen your boards out there, they're, they're...
Yeah, Highway sixty-seven boards are just ugly boards, yeah. So I would, yes. So you also asked me to do some research on available billboards? Go with this. In your packet, there is a printed image of the available billboards. And this might send a message to you that people are not utilizing these billboards. There are twenty, twenty-four, yep, twenty-eight, there are, there are thirty empty billboards, vacant billboards in that one stretch.
There's probably a reason why.
In Raton, yep.
There's a reason why.
People don't use them anymore. The biggest thing is if they sit right outside your community and you say Trinidad, the next two exits, or something like that. Besides that, people are looking, if they're in Mexico, where they're gonna stand on their cellphone.
Right. Right.
So...
The only one I thought about is the one thirty miles out. It's clear on your, it's clear on your mind that it's, you're not, I could see one that's far away. I could see one that's far away, but the one that's thirty miles out, if we have the trolley on there, I think that's what we're trying to sell, is you come visit Trinidad. You know, that's the only one that I see.
Is that a bigger one?
It's the bigger one. And that's, that's, that's what I see. Thirty miles is more on your mind as, as that, as than that. I don't agree on the one that's farther out, any of them that are farther out.
How much is that?
For it?
Tom, do you think it's a good idea of tailoring this particular contract? To think about it?
I, but I, that's, that's just the way I feel. I mean, we, we do need something, I, I mean, thirty miles out is not...
But this thirty mile out one is on Highway sixty-seven?
Yes, yeah, that's not a...
Yeah, it's on I twenty-five, it's on Highway sixty-seven, it's not, this is the, I, I see what you mean.
You see it?
I wouldn't mind one on I twenty-five right when you turn onto Raton. We used to have one, right-hand read. This one is, I, I can't encourage you guys enough to go see this, it's not lighted, it's out in the middle anywhere.
Yeah, so in that sense, then I'm fine that we just don't...
But I would say, I would say if there's, if there's anything on I twenty-five that opens up, that's a larger board, that we would be interested in that?
There isn't right now.
Right.
If there is, then that's what I, that's where I would like the trolley at, because, and one closer to town, because it, it's...
Yeah.
You see it, and we want to sell downtown that trolley.
So which, at which points am I looking for this, this available billboard then?
On I twenty-five lighted right-hand read.
From where to where?
Within thirty, forty miles of Trinidad.
You mean the direction?
Forty miles, right, so forty miles south of us? Yes.
Right.
I mean, this, it's so expensive, it's crazy.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we, I would make a motion and that we table?
I make a motion, we just, I can cancel.
I, I would like, I, I would like to entertain the idea of cancel, you have to have sixty days notice of cancellings, of notifying them, a sixty-day notice, and we would be interested in still doing the board if it was on the I twenty-five board or right-hand read lighted board.
Okay, so we have a couple motions on the table. Can we, let's, I'll go back and resend my motion to table.
I make a motion that we don't accept these.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. I would cancel them, or canceling it, the motion has to be canceled.
It has to be cancellation.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's okay.
Yes.
Okay, roll call, Cress?
Uh, yes.
Lackey?
Yes.
Salazar?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
These ones are starting doing that comparison.
You go to Raton, and like if you're gonna go to, it's a left-hander, and you go... And it's not a bad board if you can find one on that stretch that is lighted, right-hand, but there's literally only two of them, and the rest are really, horrible boards. I'm embarrassed when I see them, they're just these little tiny things. Okay, so I'll keep my eyes open for that one, or let them, inform them that that's what I'm looking for. I think that's why everybody, I think, yeah, thanks so much Marty, I think that's what everybody's looking for, that's why, but there's all those new board laws, you can't put up more boards, so there's only a few of those lines. Adventure Outdoors Magazine. This was just somebody that contacted me, no affiliation, no anything, that wanted us to look at it, so I forwarded it to Marty, it looks like it went through Victor too.
It did, apparently they advertised with funding through economic development at one time. So I didn't have anything, okay.
So tourism files.
I do like this magazine. We sometimes get it at home. It is informative. It is, um, informative, it's colorful, colorful, it draws you in, and it's specific to, um, different types of, um, outdoor rep. Howard especially likes it for the fishing.
Fishing, there's hunting, there's bicycling.
Yes, it's a great magazine.
Hiking.
And they have a really good readership.
I, I think tourism actually paid for part of the sites, I think this was a joint venture between Tourism, Economic Development.
I didn't find it at more adventure in the, the financials for last year.
Oh, maybe not last year, but maybe the year before. Yeah, we did advertise in this, maybe in thirteen years.
So, what do you know by April seventeenth for space deadline?
So, it looks like there's a, a couple different packages here. Um, the first package is, uh, is forty-nine ninety-five, and the second package is...
In your financials, you'll notice that your, um, event, your advertising line is a little slim. Uh, so it might be that you need to move some funds from buckets in around if you wanted to do this particular advertising.
Tom, Tom would like to table it till our next meeting?
You got, okay, yeah.
Do we have enough time if we want to go?
Your deadline for space deadline for reservations is...
Are we on time? It's April third now?
It's April third, and the deadline is the seventeenth, is that correct?
Yes.
So our next meeting would be the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
I would have to call him that day, they always give us a little anyway, but that's not a voting meeting either, that's a work session.
We would have to have a voting meeting directly after the work session.
What you could do if you have this specific item, you could have a special meeting for that.
Right. I would like to move forward on it so that we can meet the deadline. So let's, um...
For advertising, is we have, we have about twenty-five thousand?
We're in the hole.
We're in the hole.
That's why I know.
Yeah, but we can move funds.
Yeah, but that's...
We're gonna...
I think forty-nine, forty-nine hundred dollars at this point, um...
I think it's a little bit to pay for what we, the exposure that we get from this type of readership if outdoor recreation, fishing, hiking, boating, is, is one of our economies that we're trying to...
One of the, one of the things that I would like to see represented in is Trinidad Monument Lake, or...
Well, that's what we're going here.
That's what I want to see, and there is that.
So you're...
What is this one called? Adventure Outdoors Magazine?
The summer twenty nineteen issue seems to be pretty expansive as far as what they're featuring. Um, Marty, other question, on our financials?
Yes, ma'am.
If the detail report shows the amount of money that we have spent this year so far, it really hasn't ref, it doesn't reflect how much money we still have in the bank?
You know, the spreadsheet that Tom and I did where we have committed a balance, that's what we really need.
Okay, so that...
Yeah.
Alright, so look on page two of the detail report, account detail. Go down to advertising and publications. There's your description of your expenditures.
Right.
The last column is your running balance.
Twenty thousand P ninety-six, is that right?
Twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-six ninety-two.
So we're not in the red.
We've committed though, to future.
Yeah, so I guess, I, it's still not exactly right, although it's really lovely the way that it is, it's not, it's like, like to me...
It's not what we have to decide something.
To me, if we have a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget, we spend like ninety thousand dollars a quarter, and we've spent forty-six thousand dollars this quarter, does that tell us that we have about forty-four thousand dollars to spend?
No, your balance right now is twenty thousand dollars, and that is without the encumbrances of True West Magazine August issue?
Yeah.
And, uh, your K R D O?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm explaining myself right. Or, is like, I know that we...
Do we have residual funds?
Yeah, I mean, I know that we have spent twenty thousand dollars, and we've probably spent more than that, but how much money do we have in the bank?
For advertising and, oh, for our...
Oh, 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 I don't know that.
Yeah, alright.
So now, so now, K R D O comes out of this twenty, this twenty thousand?
Actually, K R D O comes out of your outside contract services.
And that's showing to a balance of twenty-six hundred?
No.
It's not, I don't tell you what it doesn't...
Outside contract services is... See, and so, our actual amount that we get spent this year is this amount, so see, it's, it's not too high.
It's not broke down.
Plus, Tom, what we can do is take outside contract money and move it into advertising. Yes. That's where we pick up the balance of what we need for future advertising dollars. We've overspent, uh, in our commitments for this first quarter for advertising, but, uh, after the first quarter, we're now allowed to take money from outside contract services to put it into our advertising budget.
Your outside contract services line is specific, is, is been utilized previously for, uh, when you do an R F P for a marketing agency. And so, you decided not to do that, so that fund balance there is, could be moved into other lines.
There's nothing on this paper that'll actually show. That's why that other spreadsheet we have would be really helpful.
And that's the one that we had...
Yeah.
That's what we're working on.
That's the one I'm currently working on, is moving, is identifying the encumbrances and having a, a running balance.
When are we gonna have that?
Um, after Thursday? I don't have anything else to do.
I really have to even do this, because I know you've been working so hard. If I could make it simple for us.
Yeah.
Like, so if we have three hundred and sixty, all the expenses for running the welcome center add up to, at once, a hundred and twenty-five, and so, we have two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars less, we spent twen, we spent forty-six, so we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's what I'm...
So, I propose that we, we go, we fund this magazine.
Yeah.
This way, this way we meet the deadline, and...
So which are three options?
Yeah.
So, uh, Monument Lake Golf Course, um, hiking, biking?
Right.
All the things that we want.
Anything that's a city entity.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then, with that, I would say that what I'm hearing from them is we're gonna go with option, um, A. A, that we get a half-page, full-color advertisement of either Monument Lake, or the golf course, or city entity, or split, and, uh, and that whole package.
Yeah.
Where is option A? It's on page two.
You mean, uh, twenty-nine...
For forty-nine ninety-five.
Yeah, City of Trinidad.
So this is what it looked like before?
Yes.
So we gotta do a better job.
We do.
Yes.
That's why I'm saying, anything that's a city, anything that's a city entity, that's Jonathan, he was hiking.
Downtown, downtown light, uh, Monument Lake, or...
I think, I think the golf course and Monument Lake, those two.
A collage.
But they have so many tournaments, you know, even if we can do a split page.
Yeah.
Or, um, and we have four hundred and fifty words of, uh, of an editorial with that, and we get, uh, the homepage spotlight, we get the page of photos, we get one week of daily Facebook social media posts, we get all those other posts, and we get social media tags, and... Would they help us put an ad together? Okay. So we could send them some pictures?
Send them the copy and send them the photos, and they'll design the ad. Well, one thing that I think we always overlook, too, in that is the, um, picture that you just gave us for the, did you have the Bloom Mansion, or the...
Oh, yeah.
The blockhouse quarter?
That was a really good picture.
Yeah, we had, we had picked that one out.
Yeah, that, with the lake, the golf course.
And that's what we want to advertise, we want to advertise sites in Trinidad.
Yeah. Okay.
So is this just for one issue, though? It's only for one print? It's for one, one print?
Four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars is one issue.
Is that a monthly issue or a half pay?
It's the magazine.
One issue of...
Oh, oh, it's one annual issue?
Yes.
So it sits around all year?
It's a summer twenty nineteen issue, so they have, they have seasonal issues?
You can get it, yeah.
Rather than monthly?
What does that say, that again, please?
They have seasonal issues, rather than a monthly issue?
And we're buying the seasonal issue?
Yes, this will be the summer.
I think that's good.
Summer twenty nineteen issue.
So, the retail areas where you can get them are, well, not our Walmart that I've ever found it here, but Barnes and Noble, um, that's generally where we pick ours up. Uh, the average reader per issue is four hundred and eighty-five thousand approximately, that's a pretty good...
I believe there's also digital involved in this, too, isn't there?
Yes, online, digital, print, social media.
I make a motion that we accept.
Okay, second? Second? In favor?
Aye.
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 So if I don't vote, is it so guilty of?
Yes.
Let's say no.
And just, eh, just educate us how you feel about it, so if this were a team, I wanna know.
Uh, on, on this one, I just, you know, on these is until we get, um, like some of these things are placed, I mean, I like Monument Lake, and I like the golf course and stuff, but from what I've seen on the, the, you know, just on the website, I don't know, no one has this magazine, and especially if we're not distributing this in Trinidad, or, you know, anywhere, that, I've never even seen this magazine, or heard of it.
If you're a fisherman, or something like that.
Here's the thing is, is that, is if you're a fisherman, or an outdoorsman,
Right.
that's the person who's gonna buy that, and that's the person that is looking for someplace new to go. You know, so, so if there's four hundred and twenty thousand viewers on that, and you get two thousand of them that have an interest in it, you, you, you've drawn something up for Monument Lake that increases the people wanting to go there.
I agree with you, though, Joey, that the last picture did not serve as well.
Yeah, and that's, I think, that's why the, that, because my math is just like, there is nothing on this that shows Trinidad at all.
Right.
And it's like wasted money for this.
Yeah, see, now, that was my biggest thing on, on USA Today's ad, is they, um... That was, that was, but see, this is Jonathan.
Yeah, Jonathan.
You're right, you know.
Yeah, we just gotta make sure, anything, if we do a magazine, or if we gotta post better pictures, then, I mean, there's not one thing that has Trinidad.
That's awful, that's awful.
That's why we still like you. Visitors guide Studio Six, we love you. Visitors guide Studio Six, motion to reprint with minor updates. So here's the thing, I think we have enough guides to carry us through till August. We can either decide that we're going to, um, do a whole new guide, and walk down that path, or reprint it now and have enough till Christmas.
No, I say reprint it.
Reprint it? We won't have enough till Christmas. No, I mean, if we reprint it, we will.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what it means.
I, I think the magazine needs to be reprinted.
And so, then we would update as it exists, or with updates?
There's, there's ten restaurants that are not even there no more.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, and my thing is, I, I would like to see a packet inside of the new one to where we could do a slip of the, of the restaurants that we have.
And not put a restaurant page in there?
And not put a restaurant page.
So as it appears on your agenda, the changes that you identified, where to remove the restaurant pages, where we're fifty-six and fifty-seven, have a kangaroo pocket on the back page for a brick tri-fold, we will have to discuss the tri-fold design and the content of that tri-fold, and then identify, identify a designer and a printer for the tri-fold, so that we can do a reprint without that page and the minor changes that we identified at this cost.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
And then we'll have, we'll be incurring an additional cost for the design and print of the brick insert. So, just to everybody know what they're saying there, is they're saying that for us to have the minor updates and to, uh, print it, it's probably gonna cost us somewhere around twenty-five thousand dollars.
We either, we either do that, or we reprint it and have the same restaurants closed.
Well, we don't wanna do that.
You know, so...
Or we wanna start from the beginning, one of the two, right? We want it. So, what, you know?
I mean...
So you can print minimal copies to get us through the end of the year, and, and then...
How, how many do we have?
How many do we have now? We have twenty, or we have eighteen thou, eighteen, yeah, eighteen thousand.
I got a box, I got a whole case at Brick still that I, not one person, I've, I've been trying to give those things out.
Do you have them?
Yeah, I have them, so I should give those back to you, and keep like ten for Bricks, that way...
The biggest place that we use...
The season hasn't started, we don't know themselves.
Yeah, I think, I'll give those back to you, because I don't want those to go to waste. I mean, right now, I have them in three different spots in Bricks, not one has been taken.
I think the one thing is, all of us need to take this book and look at it, and, and, and see what, new ideas. We, we may have new ideas, you know, to, to implement in the, in a new, a new issue now.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I'd like to go through the end of the year, disperse as many as we can, and maybe do an R F P for a new company.
There you go.
I, I do think...
They're terrible to have to leave, okay?
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you for showing up, and we'll be in touch.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, yeah.
That's starting.
Yeah, let's clean up and go for a good year.
And, and we, the most place that we use those is in hotels, we send them on the desks, so... Okay, okay. So I'll, uh, inform Studio Six that your decision is to, um, exhaust the supply that we have right now, and that the board will be discussing how to move forward later today. Thank you. Okay, board directed on changes desired? Changes, that's the same thing, that we were just talking about. Okay, reports by members, bicycle presentation. Marty and I are getting together. Should we put that presentation somewhat together, and talk about it?
I would like to just say something that's been, I've been biting my tongue over since the meeting, two meetings ago, about bikes and bicycles. Um, I just think it'd be out of line, but I would like to say this. I thought the way that Juan Delarosa was treated when the letter was presented by President of our board, Biden, us, us not having advanced notice of that letter, and that not part of our package was not good. It put Mr. Delarosa in a position where he had no time to defend or address any of the conditions. However, in the meantime, I have been talking with him non-stop in order to heal his anger, and in order to try to get him back in the fold, because he is putting together an economy that we will not experience in any other way this summer with the United people that are coming here. I was sorry for the way he was treated, I believe that he is owed an apology. I believe that I would like to see us go back to him and say, "We're willing to work with you." That being said, he has told me he would be willing to come back to the bike, uh, presentation to help explain to the community what mountain biking and gravel grinding and those types of events are all about. He has secured national corporate sponsors, which, um, on his own, I think, um, brings more awareness to this community. I believe that, um, bike industry people from Denver to Santa Fe will continue to support him. I just hope that he will come back and be part of this presentation if you want him. That's all I have to say.
Do you want an apology for us?
No.
Or from the city?
Yeah.
Because here's, here's the way I see it, I didn't like the way the letter was given to us also. And I think that the mayor, the, the letter came from the mayor, and the letter came from Mr. Sun, I think they should have approached us.
That's exactly right.
And, uh, I think that Juan should have gone with them at some point and cleared data. I think that the paths that were laid out were those two paths that were not talked about with us, you know? We dropped it, we dropped it with the letter.
Right.
But I do feel like I didn't like the way it was done, you know, because of the fact that we read this letter... we read this letter right here and I asked him if he had seen the letter. He was given a copy of the letter, but I do feel that the next thing Sun and the mayor should have come and talked to us. And he should have met with them, and I think at that point, the issue that he had with the city would have been cleared up and he could have come forward to us. And I think that's the path that it should have taken.
And that, there's been an attempt to do that, but it's fallen on some deaf ears. Be that as it may, and I appreciate your comments, Tom, I really do. This does go back to Jonathan Taylor, it does go back to a, a lot of other issues. I just don't want anything like this to happen again.
No.
I believe that, I believe that, you know, Juan's passion for biking and bringing this activity to Trinidad is purely his passion, and it's, it's also his career.
Here's, here's one thing that I, I suggested Nancy to Marty and to Tara Marshall before she left, was on this grant form, I would like a separate sheet to say, have you had an experience with the city, how did it end? And they sign off on it, and it's given to the proper people in the city to address that before the grant is ever brought to the tourism board. And I think that that type of should be put on each grant form.
I think that's a good idea.
You know, and that's what I propose.
To clear the path.
That's, that's what I, that's what I propose, that we put on the grant form is, have you had an experience with the city, have you have done business with the city? How did it end?
Have, and, and are you currently doing business, and how much money have you gotten from the city council? Because that's an idea that we should know too.
Right.
Nancy's brought up a good, a couple, a lot of good points, but one of them was, you know, people's buy-in. So some of these people are just coming to us. Have they come to the city and have they gotten sponsors? Because me as a, as a business owner and you guys too, we sponsor things. If it's a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. And so, you know, to help, yeah, who, who all does that should be added to the grant.
Well, I think, I think in a way that's a great thing, 'cause I think, say, some of these people go through the grant process, well, then they get a grant from us, then they get a grant from the council and they get a grant. Then they come to the personal business, like some of them have, can I get a free meal, can I get a free hotel? Like, I like to see the whole picture, like what all, I didn't-
I think, I think Phil's eyes were open today.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think part of that is good. I think if somebody needs fifteen thousand dollars and they have three thousand dollars worth of business sponsors in town, and they get, you know, eight thousand dollars from us and they get four thousand dollars from the city instead of asking any one person for fifteen thousand, you also have a whole mass more people that are, that are pledged, hoping to make you successful versus just us.
More stakeholders.
Or if you have one person who has five thousand dollars and they're asking us for fifteen, if we don't give them the fifteen, they fall flat on their face.
And that's why, Tom, I think each one of these packets should have had a financial statement.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah, as we do the replies on those, that's why I think we almost need a meeting to do a reply on these grants, is to, you know, you have been, or, you know, there may be some grants that we may say, that's why I think we need a meeting for it, it's like, we believe in your function, we think that we would donate X amount of dollars towards the total amount, we would match funds. If you found somebody to fund you five thousand dollars, we would match that for five thousand dollars. Plus, we need your financials, plus, to have buy-in from everybody to be a part in the grant.
We're basically a bank, and when you go to a bank, you jump through hoops.
You have your whole life.
That's right.
You have your whole life there. And I think, I think, to me, this is a learning experience for all of us to get this amount of things. And then, to me, I, I couldn't sleep last night because of the fact of this grading thing. I wished I would have had the grading thing as I was reading each one, or my mind focused on each one so I could have given a better answer. I, to me, I was, I, I don't know if you guys have been through the process before of, of grading it like that? I hadn't. So, so I was, I was kind of, I was upset with myself because I-
And did you feel, Tom, that had, when they came today, in the personal experience of it, I changed?
I don't, I don't.
So do you think we should grade as they go through their speech? Would that be better?
I think it's, I think it's-
If you were to give a final grade?
Uh, I think it's part of it.
Yeah.
I think it'd be part of the grading.
Like the presentation should be.
Because here's some things that we didn't know about, today we've found out about.
Right.
You know?
So not to take this meeting too much later, you gotta go and I gotta go, it's twelve thirty almost, is, we need to schedule a meeting where we can just finish off the grant thing and we can go home and look at it and think of what we, we had happen here and come back to the table with. I, I, I think there needs to be provisions, like, we would do this, we're gonna do radio ads for you, we want you to find three thousand dollars with the sponsors, we want you to do this, and we want your financials, and then we're willing to give you five thousand dollars. And actually go through that, so that we keep them in order.
Right.
So they're no different than somebody that turned in all their financials. And we're saying we're gonna help you, but we need the information that was required in the packet. And for them to go out and talk about it. If they only talk about it to us, it's not gonna be as big as the one-
Well, I think the biggest thing that I see is K C R, uh, K C R T, I mean, it's double dip.
Yeah, well, here's the thing of all, of all the ads, of all the time we have already bought, you know? And can we buy a bigger package?
Yeah, we may exceed, yeah.
Can, can, can we buy a package from the Chronicle News?
Okay, so that's our homework, we need to keep moving, right?
Right.
Okay, so I appreciate you listening without, into my comment. And Marty, I'll let you know if he's, he would love to present, he'd love to do something powerfully. He wants people to understand, why are these bikes in town? Okay.
Okay.
So just to add to that, so I did contact RPM. They have provided me with the video that was presented, you missed that. It's a really good, it's the importance of bicycle tourism. What is bicycle tourism, why is it important to your community, what can it do for you, what are the deliverables? So it's a good, it's a good video, so we do have that.
Okay.
It might be a good idea for us to invite Josh with his Gidea, since that's in the community.
Right.
I, I don't know, how many people you want, should we have Tim Crystal there and talking about our trails, our bike trails? I don't know how intense you want to be, but I do think we need to meet again to, we have to do this quick though. The ATF is gonna be here.
Okay, so, um, tomorrow morning maybe?
I, I still think though, I mean, before we go too far on this biking, is I think we gotta put something with the city in place with signs. I mean, we have to have something.
See, and that's, and that's the thing, we're, we need, we need a collateral.
We are, it, it all goes back to the maps.
Monday, three o'clock.
And Camilla, I'm not, I don't mean to, but I don't think Camilla has grasped on the need for the maps. We may, maybe need to help.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're trying to be this big biker community, but we don't have one sign.
Let's have Camilla give us a report when she comes back in.
Here's, here's the biggest thing, is I think they should have already done something with Arizona and Nevada, Kansas. If the city was going, they would have moved forward with something, I think that's what they should have run down immediately.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think we gotta push, if we're, if we're gonna push tourism for biking, we gotta push on the city, we have to, they have to make an effort to follow, you know, what we're trying to do.
So when we're trying to do this with the city, and I'll, I'll push Phil, like he has said now, but he's gonna talk to the city council, have a sit-down meeting, let's make that part of that talk with city council.
I agree with you.
Okay, tourism ambassador training, so it's held the twenty-third?
It's rolling really, really well, so check it out on Facebook, share it if you can. Donna's gonna drop by some flyers, we'll start getting those distributed. Invitations is our next step, so we're gonna make individual invitations to businesses and people, our frontline people.
The twenty-third of April?
April, is there?
Hiking map.
Hiking map would have been Camilla's, um, report.
Okay, so we'll ask her, reports by staff, visitor studies.
Visitor study, you asked me to contact the state officials to find out who has provided, conducted visitor studies and we could find somebody that would do that for us, I'm still waiting response. The trolley video project, was asked to contact college to see about their media program and see if they could develop a video. I was recommended to individuals who could be, who are capable and have the equipment, Tom Murphy and Kirk Lautman of Chronicle News. Were both identified as possibilities to develop the trolley video project, we can move forward with that.
By moving forward with that, does that mean we're gonna create an R F P, or does that mean?
We will create an R F P.
Let's say have an R F P and I'd like to get somebody local, that's great. Okay. S C R T trolley?
S C R T trolley entertainment, we discussed their animated acting on the trolley that didn't go well, that we paid for, that wasn't fulfilled. I invited them to the April seventeenth work session so we could discuss that.
Okay, billboards, we talked about that?
Yep, I showed you the locations, so that's done. Colorado Classic, so before I go into Colorado Classic, I'm gonna flip that around with N Train Air. In the same, the same concept that was, that's being taken with the Comedy and Bicycle Festival that Wally is doing, there's a group, and it's a small group, it might be, I think it's ten to twenty painters, are going to board the Southwest Chief in Chicago. They're taking it to LA through Albuquerque, it's a really neat thing, and they're gonna stop in these individual communities, set up their easels and do painting. And they're stopping in Trinidad.
Yay.
So they'll be here, fifteenth, is it fifteenth?
And I text the guy.
I don't know, I left my glasses.
I text the guy, here you go. April fifteenth.
Is that a miss?
So they set up where?
Wherever they feel like it.
Wow. Yeah, I text the guy and I said, hey, this is I, if you give me, if you give me a four-hour notice in case the train is running late, I'll make sure there's some of us there for you. This, you know, I, I prefer that's the way you look at it.
What date was that again, April?
It's, it's on here, did I put this one, is this in your past?
Well, it's on the N Train Air in Trinidad, fifteenth.
We don't have that.
It's on my list, we don't have that.
Yeah, that has to, okay. Then, Colorado Classic twenty nineteen. I'm communicating with Jim Burrell with Metalist Sports. He's the one that's sending me the RPM video.
And I'm gonna re-circle about, about that just while we're talking about RPM. So the RPM contract, the ten and fifteen, went through the state, and because it's a twenty-five thousand dollar contract, the city manager, manager's gonna sign that contract.
Okay, alright. So that was a good thing, they were real happy, they haven't received their money yet, but he, he said, I'm not worried about it, so. That paperwork is being all processed. Here's the big news, nothing has happened, we just, I mean, this is huge news. They're interested in bringing in the first leg in twenty nineteen Colorado Classic to Trinidad.
So huge.
Huge, this is huge. Their biggest sponsor is VF Corporation. VF Corporation does vans in North Face and Timberland, and, I mean, they're a huge corporation. They have a hundred riders. This year is the year of the woman, the outdoor woman. That's gonna be celebrated by the C T O as such, right? And the Colorado Classic for the first time is going to be an all-women's competition. And it's going to be one of the biggest women's bicycling competitions in the nation.
Biking, biking, biking.
Biking.
Biking, biking.
Get your bike out.
So, August, you know, here's, here's the clincher. So August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is the Colorado Classic.
Ooh.
I, they wanna be here on the twenty-second.
Which is before the Blues Fest.
We have Blues Fest on the twen, Blues Fest, pre-Fest on the twenty-third, we have Blues Fest on the twenty-fourth.
Trying to get that hotel built, I'm telling you.
Yeah, that's a whole week.
So this is not-
We're hot.
This isn't done yet, it's not, but it is being proposed, and there isn't, they're not saying that they're looking at other communities to do this, they're looking at Trinidad specifically. Either for the first opening leg of Colorado Classic.
All in it, win it.
We have to make a motion to get out of here.
Yep. So I'd like to make a motion to end the meeting? This long meeting.
So official.
Because I'm still gonna look at it, because I have a decision.
Uh, second, second, roll call.
Owen Faber, Chris?
Yes.
Everybody wanna say something?
Yes.
Salazar, Michael. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your deep determination.